Thank you, Dan. Will you please do the public announcement?
Certainly, give me one second. Please be advised that the notice requirement to the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gives sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the Planning Board of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. Additionally, a special meeting notice of the time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the Board Secretary as is required by law. It's also posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings of individuals until further notice. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit gatherings of groups. The City Planning Board intends to meet on a regular schedule, will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act, but utilizing teleconferencing systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised, and the public may participate through a conference call or video system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the above notice to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows. Board professionals will also be available on the conference call and video during this meeting as well. All parties on the conference call will have the opportunity to hear the Planning Board meeting. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted, and the Board will not be able to hear any public comment through the conference call system. During the public comment periods, I will first read public comments issued to the Board, and those on the call-in lines who have interested in addressing the Board will be first organized by last name and called upon to speak. After all, organized members of the public speak. The process will happen again until all the public has had an opportunity to speak once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I'll notify you that your time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the calling number should call the Planning Department at 72745-5050.
Thank you, Dan. Please stand for salute to the flag. To the flag, the United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic. Which it stands.
For God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
On to the public hearings. The first one on the agenda is Hardenberg Street Redevelopment Associates LLC. Twenty-four Hardenberg Street, Block 51, Lots 5, 6, 27, 28, 29, 29.02, 31, 31.01. PB 2020-12. This is a preliminary and final site plan application to construct a parking garage structure with approximately 975 spaces. A central utility plant, and a loading dock, and an area to serve the proposed cancer institute and New Jersey Cancer Pavilion. No variances are requested. The site is located in the Healthcare Pavilion Redevelopment Plan area. And before I turn it over to Mr. Liebling, I just want to go through the process of this meeting. Tonight, the applicant will give the Board and any interested members of the public the benefit of the entire application of presentation. Once the presentation is complete, the public will have an opportunity to comment on this application only. Each person, one time only, for no longer than five minutes. If you have comments unrelated to this application, you will have an opportunity to address the Board later in the evening before we move to adjourn. And with that, the floor is yours, Mr. Liebling.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Liebling, before we start, this is Arvin Ito, the Board Attorney. I just wanted to confirm, Mr. Shadid, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
And, Mr. Shadid, I believe that you'd indicated that in a prior application that there was an employment relationship that previously existed between a family member and Rutgers University. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
This is George Shadid, correct?
Are you talking to George Shadid, or to Maroon Shadid?
Oh, hi, Arvin. This is George Shadid. I'm sorry about that.
George, I'm sorry. If I may, George, you'd indicated in the past that you had a your family member had an employment relationship with Rutgers University. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Rutgers University is not an applicant in this matter, but there is a proposal that a portion of the building will actually be touching upon a previously approved portion. I would respectfully ask, unless you feel strongly otherwise, that you recuse yourself this evening.
Yes, I would like to recuse myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies, Mr. Liebling.
No, no, thank you for taking care of that. That's important, Counselor. Yeah, as the chairperson stated, Charles Liebling, Wendell Marks Lane and Mittendorf of New Brunswick, on behalf of Hardenberg Street Redevelopment Associates, this garage application before you is to satisfy the 624 space parking requirement for the adjacent cancer pavilion that the Board recently approved. And the remainder of the spaces in the building, in the garage, would be used for public parking. The application is fully conforming with the Healthcare and Research Pavilion Redevelopment Plan, and you'll be hearing from our civil engineer, our architect, and our traffic engineer establishing that further. As was the case with the recent application for the cancer pavilion, the Board's review of the site plan application is for the sole purpose of determining its conformance with the redevelopment plan. And after you hear the testimony of our witnesses, I'm confident you'll be able to reach that conclusion. Those witnesses are Chris Roche, our civil engineer from Langen, our architect from Tim Haas and Associates, Todd Helmer, and our traffic engineer also from Langen, Dan Disario. With that, unless the Chair or Council have any questions, I'd like to bring up Chris Roche.
No, please bring him up.
Okay, all right. He's virtually brought up. Chris, can we, can Chris be in first place?
I need to swear a man. Mr. Roche, can you please state your name, spell your name for the record?
Sure, it's Christian Roche, R-O-C-H-E.
Thank you. Mr. Roche, do you swear or tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Roche, before we go any further, what is your role in this project? That's the subject of the application.
I am the civil engineer of record for the application.
Okay, and you've testified before this Board on other occasions, correct?
I've testified before this Board on many, many occasions previously.
Okay. Do you still hold your New Jersey professional engineering license?
I do.
Okay. Madam Chair, in lieu of going through the qualifications of Mr. Roche, I'd like to suggest that, given his prior appearances, he'd be accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Of course, so accepted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chris, the floor is yours, and the screen.
Great. Mr. Dominguez, do you mind pulling up Exhibit A1?
Sorry, sure, give me one second.
Take your time.
Is the screen sharing? There it is. Okay.
Thank you. The project site we're here to talk about tonight is comprised of eight properties identified as Block 51, Lots 5, 6, 27, 28, 29, 29.02, 31, and 31.01 on the City of New Brunswick tax map. Site is approximately 1.45 acres. It's bound by Hardenberg Street to the east. Residential use is to the north, Division Street to the west, and the existing Lincoln Annex School to the south. Site's currently occupied primarily by residential strike crews, some of which are utilized by RWJ Barnabas Health as office space currently. As Mr. Liebling mentioned, all eight properties are within the Healthcare and Research Pavilion Redevelopment Plan, and we're not seeking any variances from that redevelopment plan here tonight. We're fully conforming. Mr. Dominguez, for the last time, if you could go to A2, that's the last exhibit I'll be using tonight. Thank you. Exhibit A2 is a rendered or colored version of the proposed site plan we submitted with our site plan application. What the applicant is proposing on-site is a nine-story parking garage with a footprint of approximately 40,000 square feet. Within that garage, we're proposing 975 parking stalls. Of those stalls, we anticipate that 624 will be dedicated to the proposed cancer pavilion project as part of a separate application to be located south of the site. Those 624 parking stalls will meet the redevelopment plan parking requirements for the new pavilion building. We anticipate that the remaining 351 parking stalls will be made available for public use. I'll also note that there is 42 bike parking stalls proposed within the garage. And again, this is to aid in the pavilion project meeting its overall bike demand. For the redevelopment plan, the pavilion is required to have 52 total bike parking stalls. We're providing 42 of these within the garage, and as testified too, as part of the separate application, we're providing 10 additional stalls around the exterior of the pavilion building. We are proposing a connection between the parking garage and the proposed cancer pavilion. This will be a pedestrian bridge, which will connect from the southern face of the parking garage to the northern face of the cancer pavilion. The purpose for this bridge is to allow visitors and patrons to park their cars within the parking garage, utilize the bridge, and get into the pavilion building without having to go outside. Access to the parking garage is proposed off of both Division and Hardenberg Streets. We are proposing a one-way entrance drive off of Hardenberg, which has the ability to queue approximately eight cars. And then the garage is also accessible from Division Street utilizing the one-way access drive, which is proposed between the parking garage and the pavilion building. This access drive has the ability to queue approximately 20 cars while still maintaining a drive-through lane at the same time. Loading and unloading for the garage, as well as the cancer pavilion building, will take place at the low-grade level of the parking garage, which is accessible from Division Street. One of the key elements we looked at when designing this loading area is we wanted to ensure that all reverse or backup truck movements would be internal to the garage building. We didn't want to have any trucks backing up in the public right-of-way, crossing any crosswalks, which could create a dangerous scenario. So we designed the loading area in conjunction with the architect so that all truck movements, reverse movements, are done interior of the garage space. The loading docks have been designed to handle a maximum truck size of WB67 vehicles. However, we'll note the vast majority of trucks utilizing the loading area will be significantly smaller. We had testified to at the cancer pavilion hearing a few weeks back that we anticipate deliveries within the loading area will be on the order of 10 to 12 trucks on a daily basis. Out of those, we anticipate maybe one to three of the larger-sized trucks, and the remaining being more box trucks, UPS, FedEx-type vehicles. From a landscaping and street角 perspective, we are proposing all-new concrete sidewalk, new ADA ramps, street trees, and LED light fixtures along Division and Hardenberg Streets. The light fixtures will be 14-foot-high, new PSE and G LED light fixtures, which have been located to meet the city lighting requirements. The street trees will consist of a mix of red maple, green locavita trees, and American hollies, which are evergreen trees. I will note that there was a comment we received from the Board and their professionals about potentially adding additional trees along the northern garage base and along the western garage base. The applicant is fully willing to conform with the requirement, meaning that we will be adding trees north of the garage and also on the west side of the garage. From a stormwater management perspective, the proposed development will not increase in previous coverage compared to existing conditions. So as a result of that, we're not proposing any type of extension on-site. However, we are proposing a stormwater conveying system, which will convey runoff from the garage, sound Hardenberg Street in a pipe network, and eventually connect into the city-owned system within Somerset Streets. Utility services will be primarily provided off of Hardenberg Street, with the exception of our sanitary sewer service lateral, which will end up traveling west down Division Street. Additional site features we're proposing are an oxygen tank area in the southwest corner of the site. This will provide oxygen service to the cancer pavilion. The area will be fully enclosed with an eight-foot-high enclosure fence, as well as significant landscaping surrounding the enclosure for screening purposes. There's also a below-grade fuel tank proposed to the west of the garage. This will be completely below-grade. The only component of this above-grade will be a fuel port fill. And this will be located directly next to the loading ramps. I'll note that all service for both this oxygen tank area, as well as the below-grade fuel tanks, will be done from the loading dock ramps. We're not proposing any type of service to these facilities within the public right-of-ways. I'll also state that the frequency of service for both the oxygen area, as well as the below-grade fuel tanks, is rather rare. We're talking on the order of a few times per year. So I'll close the brief overview by stating we did receive comments from the city and their professionals, and we have no objection complying with those comments in those review letters.
Mr. Roche, are you done with the exhibit?
I am.
All right. Oh, I was on mute. I apologize. Jesus. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Roche?
First, I'll ask, do any of our professionals have any questions for Mr. Roche?
I have, this is Bob Cardika. I have some questions.
Bob, one second. Let me just finish. I'm just trying to do this in order, so.
Okay.
Do any of our professionals have any questions for Mr. Roche?
Oh, sorry.
This is Todd Bletcher. I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we'll go to the Board members. Go ahead, Mr. Cardika. You can go first.
Just, I have questions about the deck, but I'm not sure who to direct them to. Could you reiterate what other professionals are going to be making statements?
Sure, sure. We have the garage architect, who will be able to speak to the design features of the garage, as well as its appearance. And we have our traffic engineer, who will be able to discuss traffic generation resulting from the garage.
Okay, I think I'll, I have one question about traffic, and I think I'll, I think the other questions perhaps I would address to you, Mr. Liebling, and maybe that would take place later on in the evening.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Cardika?
That's all for now, yes, thanks.
Thank you. Do any other Board members have any questions for Mr. Roche? Hearing done. If you'd like to move to your next witness, please.
Actually, actually, before I move to the next witness, I wanted to just explore for a moment and provide, as a courtesy to the Board, some background information about the pavilion utility plant. Mr. Roche is not an expert, and the operation and the system of the utility plant isn't really something for, that's part of a site plan approval. But as a courtesy to the Board, we wanted to at least give you some background as to what it consists of and what's involved, assuming that is of general interest to Board members, as well as to the general. So, Mr. Roche, you're a civil engineer. You're not an expert with respect to the mechanics and the operation of the CUP, but could you just provide an overview for the Board members of the pavilion utility plant in the context of the two buildings?
There is a pavilion utility plant proposed within the lower or below-grade level of the parking garage. The plant will provide thermal and electric service to the new cancer pavilion building and to the parking garage itself. Specifically, it will provide steam, chilled water, electric, and emergency power services. I just wanted to note, to be clear, that at this point in time, the plant is only providing these services to the pavilion building, as well as to the parking garage. There were previous iterations where concepts were discussed of the plant providing services to existing hospital facilities on the opposite side of Somerset Street. That is no longer being considered. It's just providing services to the pavilion. Relative to the location of the proposed pavilion utility plant, to us, it makes sense to place the plant in the below-grade level of the parking deck, rather than trying to squeeze in significant amounts of mechanical equipment within the pavilion building itself. In order to do that, we would have had to have lost some highly valuable research space, highly valuable medical space. And in addition, we were able to get a much more highly efficient layout in the below-grade level of the parking deck. The reason the plant is so compelling to the project is for the significant amount of resiliency and redundancy that it provides for our thermal and electric operations. So for example, even if we were to have significant power outages from a regional perspective, if PSE and G services went down, we have multiple ways that we can still maintain 100% operations on the thermal-electric side with the plant functioning. And then the last point that I'll make, Mr. Liebling, is that there are state requirements for these type of plants, specifically relative to noise standards and emission standards. And this design will be fully complying with those strict standards.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Roche. I hope that information is just helpful generally to the Board. Given that, I'd like to move to our architect, Todd Helmer. There, okay, I see you. Yeah, could, Mr. Helmer, Dan, could you please swear a man?
Mr. Helmer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, Mr. Helmer, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Todd Helmer, last name H-E-L-M-E-R.
Mr. Helmer, do you swear or tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Floor is yours.
Thanks. Todd, could you describe for the Board, A, who you work for, what your role in this project is, and your professional qualifications?
Sure. I'm a principal with Timothy Haas and Associates. I've been with the organization over 25 years. I have approximately 30 years of experience in engineering and architecture. Of those 25 years or so, it's been in parking planning and design, licensed in the state of New Jersey, amongst other states, and a graduate of Georgia Tech.
Madam Chair, I submit Mr. Helmer as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes, so accepted.
Thank you. Todd, I'll give it to you to present.
Great. May I ask to have a sheet pulled up on the screen, please?
Certainly. What would you like?
A1.2. It's a parking garage plan, and I can start off with that.
Hold on one second.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, it's drawing A1.2. Yeah, if I could just start off, first and foremost, Mr. Roche had explained the sighting of the structure. The footprint, the footprint of the parking structure, it represents a fairly compact footprint, you know, with a length that is very functional and efficient in design. The total number of spaces in the parking structure is 975 spaces. The height is approximately nine levels. All of the spaces are striped out at eight foot six by 18, and it provides one-way circulation throughout. As mentioned, there are 624 spaces to accommodate the needs of the cancer pavilion regarding the redevelopment. Regarding ADA spaces, we have a total of 54 ADA spaces within the parking structure, nine of which are the ground tier, and to accommodate van-accessible spaces. And the ground tier has a floor-to-floor height of 12 foot, which will accommodate the eight-foot-two van clearance. As you can also see, there is a main entry-exit to the parking garage. As you go up the ramp, the entry-exit is designed such that it's three lanes, but it does have a center reversible lane, so that that can be utilized during the peak times, and so that you can have two in and two out at specific times. The intent, obviously, is to maximize the throughput through the gated access. In terms of visitors, visitors will most likely use pay-on-foot machines. The pay-on-foot machines will be located in very convenient locations for the pedestrians as they're passing through from the parking structure to the cancer pavilion. There also may be an opportunity for patrons to have an option to pay in lane as well. So that design is moving forward. In terms of identifying how many spaces are in the garage, it's contemplated that an occupancy space counting system will be utilized so that it will form the users and the patrons as they enter the garage, how many spaces are available within the parking structure as well. If I can, can I ask that you go to another drawing, please? 1.3, A1.3 would be helpful. Great, thank you, thank you. As you can see, you know, one of the things I wanted to point out was that the design that we've implemented here, the functional aspect of it, it's very intuitive. It offers a one-way traffic flow and circulation, which is a very friendly type of design. And the intent there, obviously, is to minimize any type of internal vehicular conflicts as well. So it's very, very intuitive. You know, what we will employ is an internal signage package. It'll have specific instructions to the users and directions, you know, for parking, as well as informational signage to the cancer pavilion. You can see that in the southwest corner is the main stair elevator tower. That's the main pedestrian vehicular circulation, or pedestrian circulation. It was mentioned earlier about the pedestrian bridge that's currently located at the third level of the garage. So that'll be connected within that stair elevator tower. We're accommodating two elevators in that corner. To accommodate code-required means of egress, you can see in the upper right, we do have a secondary stair for that. So those are the two means of egress from the parking structure itself. I mentioned that the height is nine levels. The ground to the first supported level is 12 feet. It does provide for eight-foot-two. The floor-to-floor heights on the levels above is 10-foot-six, and that accommodates a minimum seven-foot-two, which we target for Parking Industry Standard. Mr. Roche also mentioned that the pavilion utility plant was located in the garage. It is in the basement. It is in the below-grade level of this. And that was definitely intentionally designed to do so. And one of the things we were looking at doing here is trying to mitigate any type of on-grade impact to the area and to improve aesthetics. So it certainly made sense that that be included in there for that purpose. Another use that is within the parking structure, and if I can ask just a slide to the next drawing, please, which if you could do. Well, it's a cooling tower on the top level. I'll communicate that better when I get to the rendering. But essentially, the intent of the cooling tower at the top level, it's going to be at the north end. And what we're looking to do right now is we're looking to make that as much internal as possible and incorporate screening around that as well. From a lighting perspective, you know, one of the things that we certainly want to employ is to maximize passive security within the structure. From a lighting point of view, we do have LED lights within the parking structure. We do have also occupancy sensors that will essentially dim the lights in the evening. So that would mitigate light spillage outside of the parking structure into the adjacent area and neighborhood. So that's definitely something that we want to put in there. The other thing is the lighting that is on the outside bays. The other thing is the lighting that is on the outside bays. We're definitely going to have cutoff shields at the perimeter lighting so that it minimizes spillage as well. Also, from a lighting point of view, is is, which I'll show on the aesthetic and facade perspective, is the 42-inch-high parapet spandrels, which will essentially hide any type of headlights. So that's 42 inches above finished floor, so that's another aspect of that. Security, from a security perspective, I had mentioned that we incorporate as much passive passive security as possible. The expectation is that the garage will be open and staffed 24/7. Also, that we will have cameras, CCTV, located within the structure at appropriate locations per industry standards, which essentially are on the stairs, elevators, entry exits, and so forth. Also, from a security point of view, it's important that that we maximize sightlines internally. So we tried to minimize internal walls, utilize those on the exterior, enhance the lighting, open up the lobby of the main stair elevator tower, as I mentioned, and also have glass-back elevators and maximize glazing around those stair elevator cores. So from a security point of view, those are some of the design elements that we are employing. If I can ask to bring up the architectural rendering, if you have that available?
Supposedly that's on a different. Stop sharing, I'll pull it up.
Okay, thanks.
The three-dimensional rendering?
Yeah.
All right. One second. Where is the share button? There it is.
Yeah, that's great. Perfect. Thank you. So what you see here is is a view, is a perspective at the corner of Hardenberg and the access road, you know, with the cancer pavilion to the left. Just generally speaking, the architectural facade is is made up, as well as the entire structure is made up as as precast concrete construction. It has a mix of design elements, and you can see within this visual that there's, you know, light-colored architectural concrete is envisioned with some articulation intent to break up the facade. So one of the main design components to this is you can see there's some vertical walls with punched openings in it. And I had mentioned a few minutes ago that that we moved the sheer walls to the outside for a couple of reasons. One is to use those as to break up the verticality of the garage and to to increase the visibility and sightlines internally. Also, to to maximize any operational aspects to the Pavilion Utility Plant, which which is below, which really can't be disrupted too much. Also, you can see some vertical striations. What we were looking to do there is design in form liners, basically reveals, which would also break up some of the larger pieces of the vertical panels. Also, what that does is provide shadow lines, so we were trying to incorporate that as well. And those walls that I had just mentioned, those are going to not be in the same plane as the facade, so you're going to have, you'll you'll see some some shadow lines with that as well. Form liner also will bring some pattern in related to the terracotta that is on the cancer pavilion. You can see that this particular elevation is is horizontal in nature. The Hardenberg elevation is essentially is really the primary street elevation as we see it, and we wanted to make sure that that was represented as horizontal, so the ramping system is actually on the interior and not on the facade. I had mentioned a few minutes ago about the the horizontal aspect of the parapet walls. Parapet walls are 42 inches high, which essentially wrap around. Again, those attempt to mitigate the visual aspect of vehicles as well as the headlights from the vehicles as well. You can see that at the top level, and I had mentioned a couple of minutes ago, related to the cooling cooling tower, we are in the process of 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 taking that cooling tower, designing it such that it is smaller in nature, and it's going to be inboard as much as possible, so you won't necessarily visually see it to that extent. Obviously, you can see the pedestrian bridge is located at the the third level of the garage and connecting to the second level of the cancer pavilion as well. The, one of the aspects that we certainly want to do is is along the Hardenberg is we want to soften the streetscape as much as possible. Right now, there is is a landscaping, you know, a planting bed that is is along the elevation, the extent along Hardenberg Street with a sidewalk, and then another buffer of landscaping. So there's approximately 20 feet from the curb back to the to the garage elevation. And as you can see, in in the bottom right-hand portion of the perspective is a solid wall that's that is required to conceal the Pavilion Utility Plant, which is essentially at that position and lower. But what we do intend to do is we do intend to implement, you know, historic mural or artistry aspect to that, so that that we can make that walk very pedestrian-friendly and pleasing. And you can see that the landscape also does wrap along the southerly elevation as well. I think I think that just about covers the the architectural intent. And that's what I had.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helmer.
Thank you.
Mr. Helmer is available for any questions of the board.
Thank you. Do any of the professionals have any questions for Mr. Heller?
No.
None. Do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Heller? There are none. Mr. Liebling, you want to proceed?
Sure, thank you. Our next witness is Dan Disario, Traffic Engineer from Langin.
Mr. Disario.
Yes, sir.
All right. Can you please state your name, spell your name for the record, your last name?
Certainly. My name is Dan. Last name is Disario, D I S A R I O.
Mr. Disario, do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Floor is yours.
Mr. Disario, you you testified recently before this board as a as a traffic engineer or qualified?
Yes.
For that reason, and you and you've testified before it on other occasions, correct?
I have.
Yeah, okay. You you still hold your your engineering license from the state of New Jersey?
I do.
Okay. Chair, based on his prior qualification, I submit Mr. Disario as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
So accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. As you are aware, we submitted a traffic study as part of this site plan application dated December 4th, 2020. I will give you an overview of the highlights of that study as it relates to this application and the associated traffic impacts with respect to the proposed parking garage. As you heard from earlier testimony, the parking garage will contain approximately 975 parking spaces. 624 of those will satisfy the parking requirement for the cancer pavilion itself as part of the redevelopment plan requirements. That would essentially leave 351 approximately additional parking spaces available for use by the general public. As outlined in the traffic study of December 4th, 2020, we did a very comprehensive analysis of the area traffic operations consisting of the following. We did traffic counts at eight intersections surrounding the site. Those intersections extend from Easton Avenue west to Division Street and along Hamilton Street as well as Somerset Street. Those counts were conducted in April of 2019, luckily, pre-COVID-19 situation, so they are more than representative of existing traffic volumes in the surrounding area. Those counts were specifically done from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning and to the 6:00 in the afternoon to not only account for activity associated with Rutgers University, but also to get a good understanding of the medical campus activity as well. Typically, you do counts from 7:00 to 9:00 and 4:00 to 6:00, but we extended those count times to include starting at 6:00 in the morning and starting at 2:00 in the afternoon as well. We established no build conditions, assuming a 2024 completion year for this proposed parking garage as well as the cancer pavilion by increasing the existing traffic volumes by a growth rate of 1% per year for a total increase of 5% over those five years, which means that every single movement at every single intersection that we did counts that we increased by 5% to create the no-build volumes. To the no-build volumes, we added site-generated traffic that would be attributed not only to the cancer pavilion, but also to the additional available parking in the garage over and above what would be required by the cancer pavilion. So the cancer pavilion essentially consists of two components, inpatient care and then outpatient care. The inpatient care, we estimated traffic generation for that portion based on on the 96 beds that are proposed. And for the outpatient care, we modeled another cancer center in by Memorial Sloan-Kettering. For the cancer pavilion inpatient portion, based on published trip rates, we would estimate approximately 150 vehicles would come in to the garage and 60 would leave in round numbers for a total two-way of 210 during a weekday morning peak hour. For the outpatient portion of the pavilion, we would estimate, again in round numbers, 185 vehicles would come into the garage and 15 would leave for a total two-way volume of 200 trips. And for the additional parking that will be in the garage that is non-cancer pavilion allocated, so again, that would be approximately 351 parking spaces. We use published trip rates for a park-and-ride parking lot. So a park-and-ride parking lot assumes that there is some type of mass transit availability for somebody that is coming to that park-and-ride. So not only do you capture people that would be parking in that parking lot itself, but you would also account for people that get dropped off by someone else and then the person that would be dropping off would leave. So using a park-and-ride trip rates to estimate trip generation for the additional parking in the garage, in my opinion, is conservative and overestimates what will actually occur. But based on those published rates for a a park-and-ride lot, and again, based on a 351 additional parking spaces, we would estimate in round numbers, 115 vehicles would come in, 30 would leave for a total two-way of 145 two-way trips during the weekday morning peak hours. So that is one hour in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. So the weekday morning peak hour total estimated traffic generation for this parking garage, which again includes traffic for the cancer pavilion as well as the additional parking spaces that are proposed in the garage that are not associated with the cancer pavilion. In round numbers, weekday morning peak hour total trips, 450 coming in, 105 exiting for a total two-way volume of 555 trips. Similarly, for a weekday evening peak hour on the cancer pavilion, in terms of the inpatient care, we would estimate 50 coming in, 130 leaving for a total two-way of 180. The cancer center outpatient care, 20 would come in, 135 would leave for a total two-way of 155. And then for the additional parking in the garage, 40 would come in, 115 would leave for a total two-way of 155 trips. So for the weekday evening peak hour, total traffic estimated generation, and again, that's one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, we would estimate 110 vehicles coming in, 380 leaving for a total two-way of 490 trips. Now, this parking garage and the cancer pavilion benefit immensely from its location. As the board and the public is aware, there are numerous streets that surround this particular site, which will allow traffic to distribute in many directions. If you're coming from Franklin Park, you would be coming from either Hamilton Street or Somerset Street. If you're coming from Highland Park, you likely would come up Easton Avenue either to Somerset Street or Conduct Street to get into the parking garage. So because of this location and because of the extensive street network in New Brunswick, the traffic generation that is attributed to the pavilion and the parking garage will be able to disperse in many directions and thereby minimize the traffic impact at any one single location. We would estimate, consistent with what was testified to for the cancer pavilion, that approximately 22% of the traffic would be oriented to and from the west along Somerset Street. 5% would be oriented to and from the east along Somerset Street. 31% would be oriented to and from the south along Easton Avenue. 20% would be oriented to and from the east along Hamilton Street. 12% would be oriented to and from the west along Hamilton Street. And the balance, which is 10%, would be oriented to and from the north along Easton Avenue. So based on those percentages, you know, I would respectfully submit that you can see that the traffic would be distributed in many directions and thereby, again, in lessening the impact at any one particular intersection. You apply those percentages, which we did in the traffic study, to the traffic generation estimates that I just testified to. What you would see is that as it relates to the very conservative estimate of traffic that we've put forth, that along any intersection approach of the eight that we looked at as part of this study, at most during peak hours, there would be one to two additional vehicles along any approach during either the morning or evening peak hour. We've conducted a very extensive analysis of what that traffic generation means in terms of impacts the overall intersections surrounding the site. And we've concluded that the traffic impacts associated with this application are not significant and that if you were to observe traffic operations out there today and you would incline to grant this approval and go out in the future with both the pavilion and the parking garage constructed and fully operational, I would respectfully submit to you that you would not be able to notice or discern any noticeable changes in those area traffic operations. I would point out that, again, we've done a very conservative analysis, not only in terms of how we've estimated traffic, but also based on the fact that we've assumed the cancer pavilion is a standalone facility and does not interact with the rest of the medical campus. We've have not accounted for the fact that there's pedestrian bridges that not only connect to the cancer pavilion, but also to the overall medical campus. We've not taken any discounts in terms of the estimated traffic for mass transit usage as everyone is is aware. Not only is the hub city served by rail, but it also has bus service that is nearby to this site as well. So we did not take any credit for mass transit. So we did not take any credit for mass transit. And frankly speaking, we did not take any credit as it relates to traffic from the existing uses and that will be removed as part of not only the parking garage, but the cancer pavilion as well. So overall, again, I believe the traffic impacts of this application will not be significant. We did evaluate not only the surrounding intersections, but also the specific driveways, both to the parking garage as well as a cancer pavilion. And we've concluded based on the analysis of those access points that they will operate safely and efficiently. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thanks, Dan. Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Do any professionals have any questions for Mr. DiSario? Hearing none. Do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. DiSario?
Madam Chair, John Petronio here.
Mr. Cardica, did you have a question before for him?
I do. I've been trying to unmute myself, but John, if you want to proceed first, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. So just a quick question for Mr. DiSario. I appreciate the testimony. If there were an area, and this is speculative, but if there were an area where we could anticipate potentially traffic outside of what you've estimated it to be, if there was any condition that could be ameliorated in advance that we could take as perhaps a condition, let's say, if traffic ultimately exceeded what you expected to be, is there anything that you could recommend to the board that we should be considering at this point? Because as much as I appreciate the art of traffic analysis, it is still an exercise in prognostication. So, you know, my concern is and has been that the traffic conditions downtown are going to become untenable. I'd appreciate it if you could provide me some insight as to what, if any, extra steps could potentially be taken if things were to be more congested than you're anticipating.
And I think that's a good question. And I think, in my opinion, and knowing the area as I do, we're dealing with a urban environment where most structures are right up on the right away. So from a practical perspective, you're not going to be able to widen roads and create additional lanes to carry more traffic. So with that as a constraint, I respectfully submit there's not a lot that you can do to improve traffic operations other than at signalized intersections, you can tweak timing to better proportion green time based on changes in traffic volumes that may occur. And if there was a situation where you wanted to achieve more capacity at a particular intersection, in my opinion, the most practical way to achieve that will likely be to remove onsite parking so that you can free up some pavement area to stripe additional lanes. Now, given that the availability of on-street parking is particularly sensitive, not only throughout the city, but particularly in the neighborhood that's around this site, I don't necessarily know if that is a feasible option to be considered.
Well, I appreciate the commentary there and I would guess you're probably right. There's not, I would guess, a lot of appetite for removing what's there in order to make way for something new. But I appreciate the feedback and certainly I'll take into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions?
Bob Cardica, very similar question. In the event that your projections don't turn out to be accurate, let's say, and traffic ensues in a particular location, who would be responsible for litigation of that situation? Who would it fall upon to address that? Would that be something the city would need to address?
I'm going to defer to our attorney because I think that's more a legal question than an engineering one.
Thanks, Mr. DiSario. Mr. Ital, is that something you want to respond to or do you want me to?
Mr. Cardica, the conditions, the traffic conditions that are outside of the site itself that don't involve ingress and egress, the board, as you know, has limited jurisdiction to consider those things. If it was a non-permitted use that's in the zone, the board could certainly opine about how that non-permitted zone might impact traffic in the surrounding areas. This is part of a redevelopment plan that specifically contemplates this use with a parking garage of this size and the development as it's posed, the scope of the development. So this board is limited in terms of its ability to either approve or deny an application because it believes that the outside traffic that's going to be generated might be different than what the expert feels would be the case. But more importantly, as to whether this board has jurisdiction to bind the applicant or some other party to undertake some sort of an abatement in the future to public cartways, unfortunately, that is not something this board can consider. Mr. Liebling, unless, you know, your client wants to undertake the Herculean task of improving roads.
Nice shot, man.
Sure, if I, if I, Mr. Cardica.
The echo and I thought I was. Yeah, this is Bob Cardica. I hear what you're saying. And Mr. Liebling maybe can weigh in on that. I'm not, I'm just trying to determine, you know, generally speaking, when, if these things go wrong, you know, who has, you know, who bears the responsibility to address them? And, you know, for example, if determined in the future that that traffic at a particular intersection is very, very bad and a light is, you know, they have, a control light is needed at that intersection, you know, who would that fall on? What entity would that fall to?
I think all of, Mr. DiSario, you might be able to clarify this point, but I believe all of the surrounding streets are all city streets. We don't have any county or state highways that touch upon this property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it would be, Mr. Cardica, it would be the city that would be responsible for improvements. And certainly, if the city wished to wish to have a special assessment, which I'm not suggesting that, this is not something that this board would consider, but obviously, one of the remedies the city would have would be to have special assessments for the cost of those improvements.
Well, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardica. Do you have any, do you have any other questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Todd Bletcher, if I may.
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you so much. Just, just a couple of very quick questions that I brought up in the plan report for Mr. DiSario and maybe he could just walk me through a couple of intersections. And I just had some concerns over, just want to make sure that those are going to function properly, okay? So on Hardenberg Street, can you hear me, Dan?
I can.
Okay, so on Hardenberg Street, we had just pointed out that there's, there's right now what I would call a T-intersection between Hardenberg and Conduct. And that's an existing intersection. And at that location, you are proposing an inbound driveway for the parking deck. So I just wanted to make sure from a traffic engineering point of view, really more a level of service sort of point of view for that. What I'm really thinking of is a new four-way intersection that we're going to have vehicles stacking on Hardenberg, going sort of northbound, waiting to make a left turn into the parking deck at some point. And we're going to have traffic traveling north and south on Hardenberg. And we're also going to have the Conduct Street intersection intersecting with all those movements. And I just want to make sure from a traffic point of view that you're comfortable that that's going to function properly.
As I referenced earlier, we did do a new traffic study for the garage dated December 4, 2020. And referring to Table 3 of that report, the intersection that Mr. Bletcher has identified in terms of the question, all the levels of service are As and Bs, which is indicative of favorable operations with little delays. So I don't have any concerns with respect to the entrance drive into the garage being located at that intersection.
Okay, and there will be ample room on Hardenberg Street if vehicles are stopped waiting to make a left into the parking deck. Will the stacking that's going to occur there, is that going to impede vehicles that who are leaving the parking deck and trying to make a left onto Hardenberg Street to go northbound? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, if a vehicle is momentarily delayed turning into the parking deck off the Hardenberg entrance to the deck,
Right.
then anyone that's coming out of the access drive between from between the pavilion and the deck, yes, has to yield to that vehicle waiting on Hardenberg.
Okay, and does your study project, you know, how many vehicles could be stacked up there waiting to wait for a gap to make a turn or? How do we know that there's sufficient space between those two driveways to make sure that all of the intersections work properly?
Well, the northbound left turn movement into the deck off of Hardenberg operates at a level of service A. I can give you what the anticipated queuing is, but I'd have to refer to the technical analysis. But I can tell you that the queue for that movement will be less than one vehicle.
Okay, okay, okay. So from a circulation point of view, you're comfortable that the, what I'm calling the new intersection of Conduct, Hardenberg, and the entrance driveway is going to function adequately? And then that also, the new, I'll call it a three-way or a T-intersection, that's Hardenberg and the new driveway between the cancer pavilion and the parking deck is also going to function properly?
Yes, both of those new intersections, we'd efficiently have no concerns with respect to their locations or how they interact with each other.
Okay, that's all I wanted to verify. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Liebling, do you have anything else?
You're muted, Chuck.
In an effort to be polite, I mute myself. Madam Chair, I apologize. That completes our direct. And, and, you know, prepared to move on.
Okay, thank you. I will now open up the portion of the meeting to the public. Dan, will you please read the announcement and prepare a list?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I have some questions for Mr. Liebling, not related to engineering or traffic. If that's okay?
Yeah.
Again, and again, Mr. Ital can weigh in on this if these questions are not relevant or if the board should not be considering this. But can you indicate whether the exercise of eminent domain would be used with regard to any any residents or businesses that are located on the footprint of this parking deck?
Mr. Ital, can you please explain to the board the difference between the powers of eminent domain between and what is available with this project?
Sure. So I'll speak in general terms initially. First, the, this is an area that's a redevelopment area. And generally, when there is redevelopment, there can also be a redevelopment with or without eminent domain. And that's under the municipal land use law. That's located at Title 40:55D. So this board has powers that are authorized under 4055D, including the consideration of applications, in this case, a site plan application. It also has powers to review and to approve upon referral from the governing body the redevelopment plans that are submitted or the areas that are designated as areas in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation. This has been an area in need of redevelopment for some time. And this came before the planning board and at that time was presented as an area that would be redevelopment area without condemnation. Eminent domain would not be utilized to acquire private property. There wouldn't be a public taking of private property authorized under the municipal land use law.
Yeah, so mute yourself.
I'm sorry, can you still hear the board members, Mr. Cardica? Okay, a iteration that this board has is to determine whether the site plan itself fits the plan for development that is envisioned in the municipal land use law and under the redevelopment plan. Now, that's not to say that other entities may or may not be able to exercise eminent domain. For instance, the Army Corps of Engineers felt that this was the perfect location to build a public improvement or a project for public improvement. They could certainly undertake eminent domain, but that's not part of the redevelopment plan. This application is going forward under the redevelopment plan. And under that plan, eminent domain is not permitted under 4055D. I cannot opine about whether any other entity, whether it's state, state, federal or other municipal authorities or entities exercise their own powers of eminent domain. And I would respectfully submit to the board that this board cannot consider what other entities may or may not do.
That answers my question.
Thank you. Do any other board members have comments forward or questions?
I do. Again, this is Bob Cardica. Reviewing the project costs for this facility, I noticed it was something like, well, it was 48, 47 million 800 for the garage, 16 million 900 for the utility plant, and 17 million 700 for the loading deck, the ramp and all these other related structures. Will this be a New Brunswick Parking Authority deck? And what entities will bear the costs of construction associated with this? I'm trying to determine like, kind of what the, if this is a New Brunswick Parking Authority lot, you know, where is the funding going to come from for the construction?
Sure.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, Cardica, let me just add one point of correction to my last answer.
Okay.
I'd stick 4055D, the municipal land use law is what governs the board. What I also want to impress upon the members of the board is that Title 40A governs the redevelopment housing law and the, how the local government can exercise eminent domain. As to your question about funding or operation of this garage, we see many applications that appear before this board. For instance, we may have a multifamily residential structure that's being planned. And it's certainly proper to ask who's going to be operating that. If they have the answer to that, they can certainly answer that question. But it would be improper to ask who's going to be financing it. This board, or who will be ultimately operating it in the end. As this board may well be aware, there are many plans for developer, but the project gets sold multiple times before shovels finally put into the ground. So for that reason, it would be inappropriate to ask who's going to be the ultimate operator or more importantly, the ultimate financer for a project like this.
Is it, thank you, is it appropriate? Is it, uh, thank you, is it appropriate to ask whether um, this uh, um, the uh, uh, citizens of New Brunswick would be uh paying for the construction of this facility?
I don't know that Mr. Liebling has the answer, but I mean, you could certainly ask that question.
I mean, I'm, I'm just assuming, for example, if this were, it seems like these ought to be uh, uh, questions that are answer- answerable. If the, if this were to become a New Brunswick Parking Authority lot, perhaps they, they cite these facilities, you know, obviously there is a, there's a facility next door that is uh, is going to lease six hundred plus spaces in there. And perhaps that provides a uh sufficient business model to ensure that the Parking Authority uh recoup the costs of uh. So I'm just, I'm trying to get at, you know, you know, whether the, the um, uh, really, ultimately, I'd like to know whether the um, uh, uh, New Brunswick taxpayers are going to be funding the construction of this uh, of this uh parking deck in any way.
Yeah, m- maybe Mr. Liebling might want to chime in on this, but at this point, I would say that the application itself does not involve the New Brunswick Parking Authority in terms of the four corners of of the application itself. So, so I, I don't know what their involvement would be beyond this point, um, nor do I have uh, uh, believe, do if you know whether the Parking Authority is, is or isn't going to operate the parking garage, or if you'd like to, uh, if you know and if you'd like, um, present that information as to who might be financing this. But again, it's not something that we can mandate that you answer.
Yeah, and and when, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I stepped on you, uh, Madam Chair.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say, we, we shouldn't consider who's financing this while we're making our decision for this application. That's outside the purview of what we're supposed to base our decision on. Is that correct, Mr. Ital?
That's correct. It would be almost the same as, you know, w- we uh would look into a development and say, well, who's, who's the bank that's going to be financing it? And and then you start getting into a slippery slope about knowing the terms of the financing.
Right, that's not in, yeah, that's not in our scope for determination. I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. But please, Mr. Liebling, go ahead if you had an, an answer.
Sure. Uh, the applicant is reviewing various options for the fineration, the ownership of the, of the garage. Those may be unified, they may be separated. Um, and we're, we're in the process of the, of, of going through those inquiries now. Um, regardless, the parking garage will have the required uh number of spaces for the Cancer Pavilion, as well as provide uh the public parking. Obviously, we, we, we need to finish this garage, um, where the redeveloper charged with construction of the garage needs to be finished um in order for there to be parking available for the pavilion. Uh, the pavilion is, is underway at this point. Um, the property has been transferred, uh, development agreements have been signed, dollars have been deposited for the construction of the replacement school. Um, so uh, it's very much off to the races that the garage is, is the tail here, the pavilion being the dog. And um, you've given the track record of this, of this redeveloper and the, you know, relative um insignificance of the uh, of the garage compared to the um, compared to the, the pavilion itself. Um, I think that, you know, I, I would offer that you could be comfortable that it's going to get built.
Um, yes, uh, thank you. I, I, I understand that. I, I appreciate that. But again, I'm, I guess my concern is that, um, and I may be making an invalid assumption in here, and I apologize um, uh, for my ignorance in this regard. But uh, I, you know, I'm trying to determine whether, under any circumstances, the city would be um, footing the bill for the construction of the, of the lot. Can you provide any comments on that? And again, and um, you know, I hope I'm not um overstepping my bounds in terms of answer, asking this question.
I, I can't stand to answer that. That will be a decision of the City Council.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. uh, Cardica?
No. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? Okay, hearing none at this point. We're going to move forward to public comment. Dan, if you would make your statement and prepare a list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, at this point, we are preparing to uh open the meeting to public comment on this hearing, on this application, for five minutes per person in order to assure that the planning board can hear, the interested public, and that the public can hear public comments. I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the, no, you will unmute yourselves uh with a little microphone if you're on computer, or with star six if you're on the phone. At that time, I'll ask those with the last names starting with A to provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm the information is correct and move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. Excuse me. Upon the completion of asking for all last names from A to Z, I will ask one more time for anyone who would like to be placed on the initial as the speakers. We'll move through the list by calling the person by name and permitting them five minutes. Once we complete the list, we will once again check to see if anyone would like to comment, and then I will close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted and to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I'll ask that you please remain silent while folks are initially unmuting themselves, so that we can hear each other and begin the speaker registration process. Now, I will ask that members of the public on the phone who would like to comment on this specific application with the last name starting with letter A, please state your full name and home address. A.
Pardon me, Charlie Cradaville. I did have a clarifying question. Is this public comment, or is this questioning of the witnesses?
It is both, to my knowledge.
That's correct.
It's a public comment for this application only.
Okay, but so there will not be a separate opportunity for people to comment from the questions?
No.
Okay, how about the folks who want to make a case as an objector? When, when do we get to make our case?
Question for you.
Certainly, Mr. Cradaville, are you an objector in this case who'd like to make a case?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you have any witnesses?
I do not have any witnesses.
Okay, so you'd be making comment.
I'd like to make a case under Rule Two, colon, two dash three, order of presentation, makes it very clear. Uh, Section D, upon the conclusion of the presentation of the application, any objectors wishing to present a case in objection to the relief sought may do so in such order as may be recognized by the chair and may call any witness for testimony and introduce any documentary or other evidence upon which she or she will rely. And I submitted a number of uh evidences to you. So I'd just like to, to go for them. And I think it's pretty clear from this that, that the uh time limit on public comment does not apply to the objector cases. So I just want to make sure that I exercise my right, as I've stated from the very beginning, that I want to fully object to this application.
Madam Chair, as uh.
Mr. Ital?
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Cradaville's indicated that he's not having any witnesses. My uh advice to this board would be that it would be public comment. Uh, he could certainly introduce documents. He can certainly uh provide any testimony that he wishes, since he's going to be his own witness. And so therefore, uh, there's no need to have a separate section of unlimited duration for Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cradaville. You have five minutes. Well, you, you will have five minutes.
Uh, point of order that applied to all of the objectors who either emailed um Dan or Mr. Ital prior to the uh beginning of this meeting?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall getting any emails, so.
I did email Dan.
Dan, you want to go ahead and prepare that list?
Of uh, of public commenters?
Yes, please.
All right.
We put out this objector issue first. Is there gonna be, are you gonna follow the rules? Or are we gonna be denied the right to make our cases?
It stated that they are, they can be heard during the regular public comment portion along with anyone else. Is that correct?
It's wordplay uh to state that this would be an objector's case when there are no witnesses, there are no expert witnesses, there are no fact witnesses that are being presented besides the speaker, uh, him or herself.
Him or herself.
And the documents that will be introduced, as Mr. Cradaville's indicated, he's already presented them for consideration by the board. He can certainly uh comment on those uh during the public portion. He can certainly cross-examine any witnesses, any of the three witnesses that have been uh presented on this application. He's not in any way prohibited from speaking, from cross-examining, and from stating his points on the record.
Okay, thanks.
Except I have to do all of it in five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Well, to make a case with seven uh documents of evidence, and also to question the three witnesses that we heard from tonight, five minutes is not enough. I've put it in writing to make us, I'd like to be an objector, and I wonder why my rights are being restricted now.
Your rights aren't being restricted. You're out of order now. We told you, you can speak during the public comment portion, and that's when you will have your turn, just like everybody else. Dan, can you please prepare a list?
Objection, the council's breaking its own rules.
Can you cite where that witness is necessary? Yeah, point of information, where is it codified that this is allowed?
Dan, do we have the ability to mute the public at this point?
Yes, um.
Well, I, I have to object.
Alphabet?
Public is raising objections. You're trying to, I'm sorry.
This is going against the rules of the board.
Once again.
If the public does not mute themselves and they continue, we're gonna mute everybody, and we're gonna hold the meeting until everybody can remain in order. We can't conduct this.
In order.
We want to get the meeting done and ease them. No, I want to, I want to give everybody the.
To be in order, you have to follow your own rules.
This is.
Dan?
Madam Chair?
Dan?
Yes.
Trying to follow the rule that you set forth. You, you put work into these rules. You changed the rules recently. I put work into read the rules, study the rules, and make sure that we were gonna fully be able to object. And now you're, you're taking away our right to object.
Madam Chair, I couldn't hear what you said. I apologize.
I was asking you to please, is there any way to mute the public so that we can continue this meeting in an orderly fashion?
The public has the right to raise objections.
You're gonna have to unmute us to hear who wants to speak anyway. So this is just not pointless.
It's an attempt to silence the public who has the right to raise the objections they're raising.
Madam Chair, if I may?
That's correct. We have any way to mute the public.
Ma'am, will you at least go on record and say that you're ignoring the rights of the public to raise objections?
Why won't you let anyone speak for the length of time they need to speak for? We're all willing to wait for them to do so.
Arvind, you're, you're muted if you're talking.
I'm sorry. Uh, under the rules, uh, the chair has the prerogative to ask folks to, who are disorderly, give them a warning. If they continue the disorderly behavior, if they do not let the meeting proceed, then the chair does have the authority to uh remove that person from the meeting. Um, I think that we, it would be probably best to unmute the individuals, go through the alphabet, and see who would like to speak.
That's, that's what I've been trying to do. People are not giving the opportunity uh to, to proceed in that manner. Dan, if we could try once again to unmute the public and prepare, prepare a list for public comment.
So again, the public will need to unmute themselves with a little microphone button or with star six, if they would wish to speak. And once again, I will begin uh with your direction, Madam Chair, to start the, the list.
Yes, please.
All right. A. B.
Lindsay Bushong.
Arthur Buco.
Uh, we, we need uh, addresses on the record.
Uh, Lindsay, mine is fifty Robinson Street.
Eighty, uh, Arthur Buco, eighty-six Lewis Street.
C.
Ed Chapman.
Tony.
Welton Street.
Ed Chapman, thirteen Hardenberg Street.
A, Elizabeth. All right, um, D.
Riley Dunbo, um, Townsend Street.
Is that Riley?
Yes, Riley.
Okay.
Your, your address for the record?
Townsend Street.
Is there a, a number?
Sixty-one.
Thank you.
E. F.
Uh, I'm sorry, I forgot to put my name in for D, I'm sorry.
And, and your name?
Uh, Nishad Data, fifty Robinson Street. Apologies.
That's fine. Uh, I think we were on F?
F, yes, Lilia Fernandez, eleven Cotter Drive.
Eleven Cotter. All right.
Lynch.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, that's fine.
G?
Yes, Juan Gonzalez, eleven Cotter Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, H?
Uh, yes, David Hughes, eleven Stone Street.
All right, let's see, I. J. K. L. M.
Yes, Matthew Meoni.
Matthew.
Sorry, I was on mute, Charlie Cradaville.
Mr. Meoni, your address? Charlie, I got you.
Thank you.
M. E. O. N. I. My address is Metatcha, New Jersey.
I don't know if you got me, Deanna Moore.
Yes, I did. Good anyhow.
Mr. Meoni, your street address, please?
Your address is one six zero East Chestnut Avenue, Metatcha, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Come by anytime.
All right, N.
Yes, it's Martin Olson Esquire. I'm gonna speak on behalf of my client, Maroon Shiddid, who owns property at twenty-eight and thirty Hardenberg Street. Mr. Shiddid resides at Four Hidden Lake Drive in North Brunswick.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Um.
Madam Chair?
E.
Oh, Peterson.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, Michael, Michael Peterson.
Address, sir?
Twenty-four Moak Drive.
Twenty-four. Um, Q?
We're still on P's. Jim Puskas, sixteen Hardenberg.
Jim. Six. All right, uh, Q. Q, R?
Harley Rubens.
I'm sorry?
Harley Rubens.
Harley.
Also Miguel Romero.
Okay, yeah, Romero, address, sir?
Three thirty-one Somerset.
Right, um, R, S?
Linda Stork, twelve Parkville Hard.
Linda Stork. T. U. V.
Victor Vaughn, ten Landing Lane.
U, V, W. X. Y. Z. Did we miss anyone?
Yeah, sorry, Frigga, uh, Ningja. Uh, one twenty Nielsen Street.
One twenty Nielsen. All right, Chair, Madam Chair, we have a list. And the uh.
Thank you.
The first speaker uh is uh Arthur Buco.
Mr. Ital, you have five minutes.
Arthur Buco, I, I, I. Arthur Buco, I, I need to swear him in. So.
Okay.
Arthur. Let's make you.
Can you just please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Arthur Buco, B-U-C-C-O.
All right. Uh, do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You have five minutes.
Um, all right. Basically, I think the point I would like to make is that this is, um, this entire plan is contrary to the, the health and the safety of the community. I think there are very pressing reasons why the, the schools should not be demolished, and we should try and halt the, the waste of taxpayer money, the, the really gross misuse of taxpayer funds in building pointless parking garages that are going to take decades to pay back and are just a huge opportunity cost for the time and money of both the municipal government and the, the people that live in this area. I don't see how this benefits anybody. There's a very good school in the New Brunswick, like, community that a lot of people send their kids to, and it's one of those schools where you walk your kids to school every day. You know, there's a great community for that school, and you're going to destroy that if you move the school across town to a former chemical waste dump. And it is going to be so, so harmful to these kids to uproot them from this place in their community and put them in a warehouse that, you know, they're not going to be able to go outside for recess. It's going to be an unsafe and unhealthy environment for these kids. They're not, you know, they're not going to be able to get to class on time, get, get to school. It's, it's going to be terrible, and there are also.
Mr. Buco? If I may interrupt just for, for one second. I don't know if you're aware, but the Board, the Board of Education in New Brunswick does not own that school anymore, so it, that is not a, a point of contention with this project. It is no longer.
Okay.
It is no longer our property.
I appreciate that.
I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, then I guess moving forward, um, the, the role of eminent domain in the, in the acquisition of nearby properties to build the parking garage in the cancer center, I think just on its own shows that this entire project is contrary to the well-being of the local community, because at, at the end of the day, people are going to be forced to sell their property. And that is, you know, obviously, you know, something that's being forced. It's, it's against the wishes of the community. It's pointless. We don't need more parking. There's, there's already public transportation. It's, I, I heard somebody, um, at one, like, prior to this meeting, say that it was going to take 25 years to pay back the, the costs for constructing this parking garage. It's, uh, that's an incredible amount of money for a municipal parking authority that already has significant issues and already is in, like, enormous debt. I don't see how it's reasonable or even feasible for the city of New Brunswick to shell out millions of dollars to build a new parking garage when it's not going to make it.
If I, if I may, one more time, I, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but I, I don't believe at this point the New Brunswick Parking Authority is, is part of this project either. I think there's still, um, certain avenues for, for finance. So I just don't want you to assume that it's, that it's the New Brunswick Parking Authority project.
Would a, would a private, uh, parking, um, like, company potentially be involved?
This is a private development right now.
Wow. I, I, I just, that, that's very shocking to me that we would be, um, forcing people to, potentially force them to sell land to a private, um, parking garage.
In the morning.
And, like, just hand over this money to these, these gentrifiers and, like, this big corporation finance money and rip out, you know, a vital part of the community just for people to park their cars. Like, really? I, this, this is, wow. I'm not a fan of this, going to be honest. Um, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next, who's next on the list, Dan?
The next up is Lindsay Bushong.
Hi.
Yes, Mr. Itall, please.
Thank you, Ms. Bushong. If you could raise your right hand, can you please state your full name, spell your last name for the record?
Uh, Lindsay Bushong, B-U-S-H-O-N-G.
And Ms. Bushong, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you brought to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And Ms. Bushong, uh, you have five minutes to ask questions or make comments.
Cool. Thank you so much. Um, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, so, before today's, uh, meeting, like, sort of in preparation, um, I just wanted to do some, like, very basic research. I literally did this in, like, an hour, just crunched some numbers, um, uh, and what's, like, currently going on with parking in New Brunswick, because it sort of feels like we already have tons of parking, um, and this feels redundant. Um, so, I looked at the basic downtown. There are over 15 parking garages in New Brunswick with a total of 8,200 spaces, and that doesn't include any of the street parking. Um, and of those parking garages, nine of them are parking decks that are owned by the New Brunswick Parking Authority, which is currently $1 million in debt. Um, so, it kind of leads one to believe that parking is not a very lucrative business in New Brunswick, with the main proprietor of all the parking in the city not being able to make ends meet. Um, and sort of based on some simple calculations for the entire city, if all the garages were full on the 262 working days in 2020, it would be about $60 million in revenue, and for only the New Brunswick Parking 30 garages, that's going to be about 33 million. If you include weekends, it's almost 47 million. Um, and I'm sure you guys already know, but New Brunswick Parking Authority was reported 31, um, uh, reported, like, 1.1 million dollars in debt or something like last year. Um, I looked at the number, I have it somewhere, but anyway, um, so I just, it really seems like, uh, we don't need any more parking in this city, um, and there's already plenty of garages that are there, and if this was to be, um, built, i- it's just not going to be a good investment. Um, so, I, I also, I heard that the cost would be around 47 million, and I, I did a little digging and found that the average parking garage in the United States costs about 9.75 million for 150,000 square feet, and the simple site plan says it's going to be 300, 340,000 square feet, um, which would be about 22 million, and if it's supposed to cost 47 million, um, I grossly underestimated, um, the cost of this. So, if you think about, um, all of the, if you think, like, even if it's two-thirds full at 731 spaces, $180 a month, um, it's only going to be about 1.5 million dollars in revenue a year. So, if it costs 22 million and it, it makes between 1.5 and 2 million dollars a year, it's going to take over 25 years to pay off, and it's going to cost 47 million, which is twice that. So what, it's going to take 50 years to pay off this parking garage, based on, like, just, you know, to, being two-thirds full if it's not being utilized? And so, I, I just, I don't really understand why a parking garage is necessary. It just seems like a very terrible use of land, um, and something that's not really required right now. I know you said for the parking pavilion, 624 spaces, um, need to be there, but I don't see why the, those spaces couldn't be delegated out to, like, the RWJ parking deck or, um, other, other nearby, like, like, in less than a mile, um, there's 15 parking garages. So, um, it just seems totally unnecessary, and, um, I think it's, it's both not needed and would cause more congestion, which it, it just doesn't make any sense. Um, it's not going to be profitable, especially if taxpayer dollars are going into this and we're not going to see any return. Uh, and I, just another big issue is that when we were talking to the architect, they were like, oh, it's the Cancer Pavilion, it's going to be beautiful, and it's supposed to make people feel safe and happy when they're going through cancer treatment, but for nine, the first nine floors, they're going to be staring at, like, what looks like a county jail, so I don't understand how that is going to be helpful to those who are receiving treatment and how you can argue that the Cancer Pavilion is going to be sort of this nice lofty place and be, be someplace that people are going to enjoy themselves when they're literally going to be, for the first nine floors, staring at a parking garage. Um, it just doesn't, there's a lot of pieces that don't add up here, and just as a resident, I'm super concerned that decisions are being made before, like, a full financial analysis is done, before, um, you know, a, a larger, maybe, um, more in-depth traffic study is done. Um, it just, it feels like, uh, this is being pushed along without really any care to what the public thinks, especially because we've done so many of these calls and so many people have spoken out.
Second.
And, I'm, I'm done. I, I yield the rest of my time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next on the list?
All right, I'm back. Uh, next up is Ed Chen.
Ed Chapman.
Mr. Chen.
Oh, oh, wait.
Chapman.
I thought I had Chapman put down somewhere else on my, yeah, no, I just, uh, I, I think I was scribbling too quick and I, uh.
Okay, that's fine.
I apologize. Uh, Ed Chapman, uh, can you please state your name, spell your name for the record?
Uh, Ed Chapman, C-H-A-P-M-A-N, 13 Hardenberg Street.
Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Five minutes.
Mr. Chapman, the floor is yours.
My first question, I believe, is to the civil engineer. Um, I would like to know where the generating station exhaust vents, uh, where does the carbon monoxide and such like go? Is it venting at street level? Is it venting up above? Above the parking deck?
The short answer, it's venting at the northwest corner of the parking garage at the upper levels, so not at the ground level.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a plan for solar panels on the roof to mitigate fossil fuel consumption, as in many other parking decks in New Brunswick?
At this point in time, there's no plans for solar on the roof.
Okay. A question to the architect. The MCIA presentation of July 8th and other publicity documents show the parking deck with a terracotta facade that matches the Cancer Pavilion? Um, what we've been shown now is a white facade that will probably be reflecting sunlight into neighboring residences. I was wondering why that change was made?
Um, the, the parking structure, architectural design intent has, has always been, uh, precast in nature, um, of the color that you've seen, uh, gray in context, utilizing form liner, uh, as well. So, um, I don't know that it has, has changed, um, has been submitted, uh, but that's, that's, that's the design intent of the garage facade.
And do you think it will reflect glare into the neighboring residences across the street?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. And a general question, I'm not sure who to direct this to, will there be residential permit parking spaces alongside the parking deck? Does anyone know this?
I don't believe it's a question any experts can answer.
And if there are, if there are permits on that street now, I don't know why they would be alleviated. I, I don't. I don't know if anybody has the answer to that. Arvind, would you know that? Or even Dan, I mean, Dan, do you know if, there's no intent to, to, uh, get rid of any of that parking, is there?
I've not heard anything to that.
Yeah, it looks like we're going to be losing spaces regardless. So I'm wondering if there's a way for the New Brunswick Parking Authority to make up for missing spaces and also to deal with alternate side of the street parking that's going to be eliminated. Um, but I would like the board to consider that. And thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much for your comments and questions.
All right. Next up is Elizabeth Seccone. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, can you please, uh, say your names, spell your last name for the record?
Elizabeth Seccone, C-I-C-C-O-N-E.
Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Five minutes, begin now.
Um, I'm very concerned about the construction of a massive fossil fuel, uh, power generating station right next to residence, uh, residential homes, uh, particularly in terms of the exhaust. I'm also concerned with the long-term effects of using fossil fuels whatsoever when we're attempting to be a green city, and there isn't even, uh, solar panels for the roof of this thing, when that would be a simple, easy fix to do. I'm extremely concerned that this board has never taken anything into account that the public says, and I'm concerned that you've always sided with every developer that's ever come before your board. I'm very concerned that that really implies a conflict of interest. I'm very concerned that your lawyer never recommends, uh, uh, to side with the people, he only ever recommends to side with developers. There's a lot to be concerned with here. I'm also concerned that the city hosts meetings during the day that make it difficult for the public to attend, that these, uh, discussions with developers are made in essentially closed-door settings, uh, and the decisions are essentially hashed out well before you go before the public, and in that being the case, that this is just a kangaroo court type of show that you like to put on to pretend you're giving lip service to the public, when in fact you don't really care and you've already decided before you walked into the room. I'm really kind of ashamed to live in a city that's faced in, in, in that type of political climate. Uh, you know, um, New Brunswick is a, could be a very nice place to live, but not if you tear out all of the neighborhoods to put in giant buildings that no one actually wants. And I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, who's next on the list, Dan?
Uh, sorry about that, I was muted. I apologize. Uh, Nishad Data? Are you there?
Here. Hi, um, thanks, and first of all, I'd like to start by, uh, giving a, a thank you to.
I need to swear again.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that, sorry about that.
So if you could please say your name, spell your last name for the record, and then I'll swear you in.
My name is Nishad Data. Data spelled Delta Alpha Tango Tango Alpha. Um, what else did you need from me? I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the, the truth, yes.
And address, Dan?
Uh, we have him down at 50 Robinson.
Okay, great.
Provided it, you have this list.
Yeah. Thanks very much, and I'd like to start just real quick by saying thank you to Bob Cardica for being a member of the board who at least gives the public of New Brunswick a fighting chance. I was going to present this as a case, but, um, I'm just going to use this portion of my time now. Um, so, uh, Lincoln Annex is a fine school and a future-ready school. A lot of the information that has been put out by the applicant on the state of the school relies on the assumption that because it occupies the same building as the former St. Peter's Catholic High School, that it must be the same entity, which is completely untrue. It ignores the fact that before it opened in 2016, $22 million of taxpayer money was put into renovating the school. There were roughly 700 students that go to the school, and the reason why I'm presenting my case is because that it is not an isolated incident, it is something that continues to happen, uh, with certain alarming patterns across the city and with each subsequent school displacement. Uh, let's start, let's look at the Red Trail Elementary. Yeah, I'm sorry?
Are, you are aware that the city of New Brunswick, the Board of Education no longer owns that property? That the property was sold, that the land deal was settled on Friday.
Yeah, can I actually ask a question, providing clarification on that?
If I can, I will.
Yeah, why is that allowed if the, uh, approval of the site plan for the Cancer Pavilion was contingent upon this portion of the plan's approval?
Well, that, this, this, this board is charged with approving the plans for building. It really doesn't have anything to do with, with the land sale. I mean, they can buy the props, you know, someone can buy the property and it has nothing to do with this application. We, we are only here for the site plan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Arvind Itall, the board attorney. This, the board does not have the authority to stop a private transaction or the sale or purchase of, of property.
So what happens if, uh, the site plan doesn't go through and the property has already been transferred?
It's, it belongs to whoever owns it now, and they may choose to do something else with it, or whatever, whatever, it belongs to them.
So what?
It doesn't belong to the Board of Education anymore.
And is there?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
No, I'm sorry. No, 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 please.
It does not, it does not belong to the Board of Education anymore, so it's no longer a school in our system. And that is, that has nothing to do with these plans. So now these are the plans we're, we're going, looking to either approve or deny for the application for the parking garage tonight, and then we still have to go back to the Cancer Pavilion. And our board is only charged with looking at the site plan applications. It has nothing to do with the financial deals or, or the school deal, that was a Board of Education decision. Uh, please go ahead, I just wanted to try to clarify a little bit.
Uh, no, thank you, Madam Chair, for providing clarification. Um, in terms of, uh, public entities like the Board of Education, um, making sales like that, uh. uh, I mean, perhaps this is irrelevant, but what option for recourse does the public have?
I'm not sure. I'm qualified to answer that question. Mr. Ito, do you have any direction to that question?
Yeah, I mean, to answer Mr. Dada's question, I, I don't agree with him that it's irrelevant. Certainly, it's relevant enough for him to have brought it up, but, um, unfortunately, this board does not have the ability to say, this is what your next recourse is. It just, you know, we're, we're not an advisory board in that regard.
Uh, thanks for the information, Mr. Ito. I guess my only option here is to yield my time, but, um, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, next up is, uh, Riley Denbow. Are you there?
Hello, yes.
Uh, can you please, uh, state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Yeah, it's Riley Denbow, D-E-N-B-O-W.
Right, thank you. Uh, do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Your five minutes begin now.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, uh, well, I am a daycare worker. Um, I'm working with the kids who have been displaced, apparently. And I've been to a couple of these meetings, um, and never spoken before, but I just want to say that, um, overwhelmingly, I've seen that everyone present from the public has been speaking against it, and it seems like the board has already come to a decision before they brought it to the public. I've also noticed that there's been intimidation used by the board. I think it's very telling that there is no space for objection, um, that even that you're taking addresses and really like making it clear that you've written it down and you have our information, uh, before we're allowed to speak, that what's another thing that's changed is now that we're, we're sworn in, which wasn't a practice before, um...
I, I believe that that's always been our practice, because I've been on this board for probably 15 years and we've always done that. We've always taken addresses and, uh, sworn people in for testimony.
Madam, also...
With this particular board, I know that, um, ma'am, I know other boards in the city may operate differently, but the planning board has, has done this for as long as I can remember, so it is certainly not a new practice. Just, I just want to make you aware of that.
Yeah, all, all the witnesses, Madam Chair, are, are asked to put their names on the record and also their addresses. Uh, we don't ask for a home address, we ask for an address, and that's because they're providing sworn testimony.
Go ahead.
Yes, excuse me. Um, I do remember the last meeting that I was at. I was only asked for my street address and not, uh, my specific home address. I also noticed that the attorney was very diligent in reminding people of their time. Uh, I don't think I'll be needing a four-minute and a three-minute and a one-minute and a 30-second warning. Uh, it's kind of cutting into what I have to say and is intimidating, uh... Um, yeah, I'm kind of shocked, but not... You know, I've been told to expect this. I see that the board has valued short-term profit over the long-term health of the community, and I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who's next on the list, Dan?
Next up is Lilia Fernandez.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, uh, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Lilia Fernandez, F-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z.
Thank you. Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
As I have been for the last 12 months.
Five minutes begin now.
First, I'd like to begin by asking this board to dispense with the arrogance, condescension, and dismissive attitude which it displays towards the public. We are intelligent people and we are taxpayers, more importantly, in the city of New Brunswick. Secondly, I want to echo Ms. Secconi's comments. Um, I agree with them completely. Um, everything she said is absolutely right on point, and, um, it really is, it really does appear, and I would ask the board to swear, um, you know, under oath, whether or not they have already met ahead of time and decided their position on this, it matter, before even having this public meeting, as Ms. Sikora Ludwig is on record, is on record supporting this back, all the way back to June 2019.
And I just have to tell you something, this board does not meet outside of its purview. We're not allowed to and we do not do that.
Well, exchange emails or conversations or whatever. But I would also point out, Ms. Sikora Ludwig, the very peculiar coincidence of the timing. You keep referring to the fact that the school board no longer owns this property. That's right, because they just sold it last week, just a few days ago, very conveniently at the same moment when the judge threw out part of our court case and kept the rest of it lingering so that it stalled for god knows how much longer. Nevertheless, um, I want to ask two questions, very important questions. One, to the experts who have testified today. How, how can the parking, um, plan, the assessment that, that these experts have done, not consider patients at the rest of the hospital, at the rest of RWJ, who will supposedly be using the pedestrian bridge to go back and forth between the facilities, when this was the very justification for why RWJ and Debco absolutely had to build this freestanding cancer institute on the site of Lincoln Annex? So how do you not take into account the people who are going to be in the rest of the hospital moving back and forth and who may park at this new parking facility? I'd like to know if the experts have any comments on that.
Mr. Liebling, is this something any of your experts can answer?
Mr. Helmer, muted. Seth, yeah. Mr. Helmer, is that, is that an operational question that you can respond to? I'm not, I don't 100% understand the question, but...
The question is, how can this, how can the experts not take into account the patients at the rest of the hospital who will be traveling back and forth purportedly by the pedestrian bridge over the street, who may be parking in this new parking garage, which you are considering this evening? When that was the whole justification for tearing down Lincoln Annex and building the freestanding center there, that it was going to give patients access to both buildings?
It, 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 it will. I guess I, I still don't understand if people, people in this, people in this garage can cross to the, to the new building. There's a, there's a, a pedestrian bridge.
Right, so then shouldn't you account for more traffic, more cars parking in that garage if they may be visiting not only the cancer center but also the main hospital?
Well, I, I don't, we don't think that this is the most convenient parking for the main, for the main hospital. In any case, there's, there can only be as much traffic if there are spaces, and, and we dealt with the, we had testimony about the number of spaces in this garage, so when they're full, they're full.
I'm not referring to the number of spaces necessarily, but to the street traffic that this will produce, from people coming down Hardenberg or that other side street to park there.
I'll let Mr. Desario respond then. He, he's the right person.
We've accounted for traffic associated with all 975 spaces. So regardless of where the ultimate person that parks in the garage is destined to, we've accounted for their traffic.
All right. Um, the other question I have is for the board. How exactly, and this particularly to Mr. Sikora Ludwig, who made the statement, how exactly is the cost and financing of this project beyond the purview of this board or irrelevant to your deliberations here? No one goes and buys a house without knowing how it's going to be paid for. And I'm not talking just about the financing of the, what bank, whether it's going to be PNC or Chase, who's going to lend the money, but who is going to be paying for this, just as people have asked earlier? Will it be the taxpayers? Will I be footing the bill for this parking garage?
Madam Chair, this is our...
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, of course.
And, and I think that, uh, that's...
Please enlighten us.
Yeah, I think that's an, uh, an excellent analysis. If you're buying a house and you're going to add to that house, um, then you would probably have to come back before this board and get a site plan approval for that additional footprint of the, the house that you're building. This, this board ought not to be asking you out of privacy where you're going to get the money to build this house. I think that that would be inappropriate for the board to ask, but it's not just what I think. It is what the municipal land use law permits this board by its limited jurisdiction and its limited authority.
But excuse me...
And that, and people are upset because they think that this board is the ubiquitous government and that the board can do anything that the government can do, but that it's limited by Title 40, 55 Alpha, I'm sorry, 55D, the municipal land use law.
But excuse me, Mr....
It can't, it can't exceed, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
But excuse me, Mr. Ito, if I were to privately buy a house, it's not going to be paid for by the taxpayers of New Brunswick. So it's not exactly a perfect analogy. What I'm seeing is that whenever anyone buys a property, whether it's a private owner, a public entity, you have to know where the money's coming from. And, you know, the city, taxpayers are not going to pay for my house if I can't pay for it.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying that this board, under the municipal land use law, does not have the authority to inquire and make its decision based upon public or private financing. It can't do that. It, it, I cannot advise the board as its legal advisor to do something that's illegal.
So could you tell us then, please, does have the authority for that? Could you tell us who has the authority then to, um, comment on, on the financing?
I'm at a loss. I don't know.
Well, that's pretty shocking.
Whichever, whichever, if a public entity ends up financing this, it would be that entity.
There would have to be public, you know...
An outset of public hearing.
And this is exactly why we're asking these questions now, as the public, as taxpayers of the city of New Brunswick, because we want to know if we're going to be footing this bill down the road.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I hope you can understand, it's not, we're not trying to obfuscate. It's just that I don't have an answer to provide you, and I've got to keep in mind, my job as the board attorney is to make sure that the board does not inquire into areas where it is not permitted to inquire. And, and I appreciate your question, and I think, as Mr. Liebling said, if there's public financing that's going to occur, there must be, it sounds like a public hearing that has to occur before that public financing is approved. So there would be an opportunity for the public to know that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's my time. There's, there's another gentleman who's been asking to speak. Um, he didn't get to sign up earlier. Bougey.
Okay, well, well...
Then when we ask at the end for whoever we got, we missed, and we'll go through the list and add him at the end. Um, so thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Next up is Juan Gonzalez. Are you there?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Juan Gonzalez, G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z, 11 Carter Drive, New Brunswick.
Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your clock begins now.
Okay, I just want to state for the record that it's amazing that Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Ito are the ones swearing us in to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, when these are the very two people in the planning board who have misled, and I think consciously lied to the public in these very public meetings. Uh, Mr. Ito, you just stated recently, uh, in this meeting, that it is impossible to quote you to opine whether eminent domain will be used by some other governmental body in relationship to this project.
This is Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
This is a portion where you can ask questions pertaining to this application. We will have another...
Oh, wait, wait, no, no, I thought you were telling everyone that this was be able, be able to speak and ask questions. Now you want to change it again? Okay, so let me speak, please. Let me speak. I will ask questions. I will ask questions.
Excuse me, sir. I am not changing anything. This is the comment or question portion on the application. And then, as always, at the end, if you have general comments, that will be...
These are questions and comments on the application. All right, let me finish. All right, don't interrupt me all the time. All right, as I was saying, that back in March, Mr. Ito specifically said that this was a, a project that would not use eminent domain, that this was an area in need of rehabilitation where eminent domain could not be used. He knows very well that the Millsacks County Improvement Authority, last summer, approved a redevelopment agreement that authorizes the use of eminent domain. There are still, as I understand it, four property owners in the footprint of this garage that had not sold their properties to RWJ. One of them, the lawyers for one of them, I think, is going to testify tonight, and yet he claims he knows nothing about the use of eminent domain. Mr. Dominguez, I asked you specifically in March, how many parking spaces will the new garage take up? Check the minutes of your own meeting, Mr. Dominguez. You said, quote you, between 200 and 400 parking spaces. Then it, then it morphed to 650 parking spaces for the, for the cancer center, and now another 325 for the general public. Why the hell do we need 325 more parking spaces than even the, the, the cancer institute needs? Why, why all these parking spaces? Why are they needed for, if not for some developer to make some more money? Uh, Mr. Desario, you just testified that there will be no significant impact from the more than 500 cars in the peak morning hours of this project that will be coming in and out. Well, I read your report, Mr. Desario. Let me quote to you from your report. It says that cars traveling northbound on Hardenberg Street and making a left turn will go from the present 22.8 seconds delay, or a C rating, uh, to 148.1 seconds. That's a two-and-a-half-minute delay per car, an F rating. Your own report says cars traveling southbound on Hardenberg Street and making a left turn will go from 19 seconds delay to 42.4 seconds delay, more than double, going from a C to an E rating. You don't consider that significant delays, especially when you're dealing with an additional 500 cars? Finally, there's the issue of the power plant. We've heard almost nothing about the power plant. What kind of power? What kind of pollution? What's the potential health impacts on residents? Why was the power plant included in a plan for a garage? Was it so RWJ's private, for-profit investor partners could rake in some federal tax credits for new power plants? Finally, to Mr. Liebling and Mr. Palladino, because I know you're both listening, you and your clients may feel relieved that you finally got to purchase the Lincoln Annex and that you continue to ram your plans through. Even you will admit you've never seen the kind of massive and relentless public opposition...
One minute, one thing.
And you've awakened an entire community, and we're not done yet, exposing your slavish, racist, gentrifying policies. Thank you.
Who's next on the list, Dan?
Next up is David Hughes. Are you there?
You see what they're putting, Juan Gonzalez for president?
I'm here.
All right. Can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Yes, uh, David Hughes, that's H-U-G-H-E-S. I'm the treasurer of the Rutgers AUPAFT Faculty Union at 11 Stone Street.
Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I, I do so swear, yes.
All right, your clock begins now.
Our union, representing 6,000 people, opposes this plan from top to bottom. It represents an insult, an assault on the students of Lincoln Annex School and their families in the entire neighborhood. I am going to stick, though, to the micro-matter at hand here related to the parking lot. Mr. Roach, could you show your second, um, slide again? I'd like to make note of one particular aspect of it. I don't want this, this fussing around to, to count against my time. So if he can put up that slide, I'll draw everybody's attention to one aspect.
I believe Mr. Dominguez can pull that up momentarily.
Please stop the clock. All right, very good. Uh, thank you. Um, so if you see where, uh, Division Street meets this new access road, maybe enlarge it a little bit. The angles on that intersection are not right angles. They are curved in order to facilitate cars, um, entering and exiting at higher speed than, um, really is ideal. Um, oh, in fact, what I'm looking at is not the access road, but just north of it. I'm looking at, I don't know how you describe this, um, but the east-to-west running street that run, that, 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 uh, goes straight into the middle part of the parking lot. Those are very, that's a very generous curve, which would allow cars to swing through it. I'm not sure at what speed, perhaps 10 miles an hour, perhaps, perhaps 15. And you can see that the crosswalk is much longer than it needs to be. I, I wonder why you haven't gone with right angles. Uh, and I say this in the interest of my 6,000 members who walk through the... walk through this neighborhood, and of course, tens of thousands of students, and not to mention, as I mentioned, the assaulted people of this neighborhood. You could design this very differently if you cared. You could put right angles, and you could have a sidewalk that was even all throughout. You could have a speed bump. You could have stop signs. Remember, this is a residential neighborhood where children play. So I, I, I wonder why you're so keen. And perhaps Mr. Helmer explained that to me when he talked about the way in which this plan would maximize the throughput of cars. Yes, this is a plan, this is like a freeway entrance designed to maximize the throughput of cars. So I would suggest that you redesign this micro aspect in a way that actually demonstrates concern for the people and the pedestrians in this neighborhood. And let me just ask why you have not done it that way already. Why are there not right angles in the interest of precedent of pedestrian safety, rather than this very generous curve? Why?
The short answer is because this is for the loading area entrance, and the large radii are required to accommodate the truck turning movements into and out of this area. We did put thought into the safety of this location. I tried to touch on it during my testimony. The number one thing we want to avoid in getting parking or getting trucks into the garage was we didn't want to have reverse movement of the trucks backing up within a public right of way. It's never a good situation if you have that, especially if they're crossing sidewalk. So in order to do that, we've done all our loading movements internal to the garage as far as the backup movement. But to rehash my first statement, to reasonably have the large radii there and a slightly longer crosswalk area gets to accommodate the vehicular movements required to get the trucks in and out safely.
I see. Yes, you explain the trucks will be very long. Why don't you make the sidewalk, rather than having a curb cut there, why don't you make the sidewalk even, so that vehicles have to go up and down, which will slow them down?
A driveway apron? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, like a, like a, like a residential driveway.
I have no objection to a driveway apron. I think it's a similar type condition. We're still allowed to truck movements to move in. If the city professionals also feel like that's a good idea, that doesn't seem like an insurmountable for them, to me.
Right. Let me just make sure we're talking about the same thing. I'm saying that the pedestrians would have no grade change. They would just walk along the same elevation.
One minute warning.
Trucks would have to go up and down. Are we talking about the same thing?
You still may have a slight drop for the ADA ramps coming down at that location. It could be less pronounced. And we still could have, we've done this at several other locations in New Brunswick. When I'm referring to a driveway apron, it's the vehicles coming into that driveway will rise up slightly, you know, on your order of three to four inches. The sidewalk would be leveled the entire way, and once they have to go to the sidewalk, they're going to begin their approach downwards into the loading.
Just so long as the sidewalk is straight across, so there's no up and down for the pedestrian, then, then that's much safer for them, more wheelchair accessible, and allows the vehicles to, 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 creates a speed bump effect for the vehicles, right?
It, it does.
Okay, good. If I have more time, let me repeat what Gonzalez's concern about the power plant.
Time, I mean, time.
Your time is up, sir. Who's next on the list, Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, and I always say this wrong, and I'm sorry, Ming Jiai.
Yeah. You know, you got close every time.
I, I. Ming Jiao. All right, can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Yeah, Ming Jiao, J I A.
All right, can you swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Totally.
Your time's on.
Alrighty. The demolition of the Lincoln Annex School may be called many things, an assault on the community of New Brunswick. It is best identified as an assault on the community of New Brunswick. It is only natural that a school servicing the people predominantly black and brown community of our city would be seen as a small expendable cost to build a cash machine, with sole community support, that we already had a marathon meeting that went into 2:00 AM done to force a vote. It is only natural that the disjointed sneaky mechanisms and the changing rules and the constantly shifting frameworks of these public comments and meetings riddled with obscure and obsessive language, used to confound, exhaust, and bewail the public into silence, are utilized to confound, exhaust, and bewail the public into silence. It is only natural that the organs of education that service our community are seen as expendable. It is only natural that our children and the resources that are utilized for their growth and learning are seen as expendable. Another speaker who spoke before me identified the contradiction here, that those in power value short-term profit over the long-term health of our community. Our children and family structure are expendable to them in the age of COVID because the profits that this project would yield and the luxury they'd buy with that profit means more to them. Racist and gentrifying practices rooting in the non-public resources to black and brown communities date to the inception of our system.
Do you have any comments that are relevant to this application?
Oh, absolutely. I'm making them. So to my beloved fellow citizens of New Brunswick, I implore you to find local organizations to fight for our community and for our community rights and our community dignity, because obviously, these routes have met us with nothing but condescension. It would appear that the routes that are supposed to, like, somehow derive legitimacy through representation of the people, in fact utterly lack that, and therefore lack legitimacy in the eyes of the public. That'd be crazy. And anyway, for the people in power who allow this atrocity to pass, the community opposition that your callousness has engendered and will continue to gender, it will make the 2:00 AM marathon call feel like a paradise. And I really hope that the vacations that your profits buy were worth it, because we're watching. We're always watching, and we're taking note, and we don't forget when you hurt our kids.
Dan, who's next on the list?
Next up is Charlie Cradaville. Can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Charlie Cradaville, K R A T O V I L.
Mr. Cradaville, do you swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
You're on.
Before you start the clock, I just want to clarify, I'm only going to get five minutes to cover my exhibits and any questions I have for the witnesses.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will you pause the clock while the witnesses are answering my questions?
No, we will not.
Okay, so I'm going to have to forego a lot of my questions and a lot of the discussion that would normally come forth will not. But maybe they could just tell us at least what kind of fuel this power plant is going to burn and how much pollution it will emit.
Mr., Madam Chair, the operation of the power plant is not a subject of this board's review. It's not before the.
How will it create, how will it create the electricity that you spoke about in your presentation? How will that electricity be created?
I, I repeat, Madam Chair, we gave, we gave the best information we could. We don't have experts. It's not the subject for this board to, to review.
Well, there you go. You just got a great reason. You just got a great reason to deny this application. They did not have the appropriate experts. They do not have the appropriate answers. And they want to build a power plant in the middle of a residential neighborhood without those answers and those experts. So that, that's open and shut case. I, I will, you know, try to cover some of the issues with this. Juan Gonzalez hit the nail on the head. What was presented to this board in March is a far cry from what we're hearing about now. The project was done all backwards because Robert Wood wanted this done. You guys passed a redevelopment plan that narrowly passed, and kudos to the two members who voted it down. But that redevelopment plan has not even been followed. The eminent domain is illegally in Exhibit B seven. You can see that for yourselves in my exhibits. And of course, the size of the parking deck has grown astronomically, even as the parking business has collapsed and failed and is hurting New Brunswick right now. So to, to build another parking deck at this point is really, you know, not in touch with reality or present day. And I am just going to share my screen here so that I can put another, another exhibit on the record. This one was not able to be put on the record in time for it to be on the website. Can you, Mr. Dominguez, can you give me permission to share the screen?
Hold on just a second. Mr. Cradaville, what is it that you'd like to put up? Because there, those documents need to be presented prior to the meeting, and I think Mr. Liebling might want to take a look at it before.
Are, are these, are these documents already, already posted, Mr. Cradaville?
No, I came across one more that I wanted to share, and this is a post from the chairwoman of the board.
It's, 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 goose, goose is good, is good for the gander. My exhibits were in on time.
Okay, so is that objection?
I'm objecting. You have plenty of exhibits you submitted, which I reviewed there.
Sure. Okay. Well, I just want to point out for the record that Ms. Sikora Ludwig, who's chairing this meeting, attended the announcement of this project June third, 2019, and made a supportive Facebook post afterwards where she talked about how this is being developed through yet another public-private initiative and a determined group of individuals. And among the dynamic speakers were our own Mayor Jim Cahill and Chris Palladino, president of Devco. So it seems like she's already made up her mind on this project and had done so more than a year ago. So I would cite.
Mr. Ital, I don't object. Mr. Mr. Cradaville is free to say what he wants. I object to the inclusion of that exhibit in the record.
Okay.
And for the record, I, I did attend an announcement, and I live in the city. I'm allowed to attend things that are going on in the city.
Right, and I'll cite.
And at that, and at that presentation, there were no specifics of any projects that are going on tonight, and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, great. Well.
How did you get control of?
If you guys are going to all talk and take up my time, you need to give me more than five minutes, okay? So is it my turn to speak or not?
Control of the screen?
I'm sorry, what?
How did you get control of the screen?
I hit share, and then I shared the screen.
Okay. Mr. Cradaville, we were still talking about whether you could introduce it, and you went ahead and tried to introduce it. I, I will say this, that that is not something that has been provided to the public in, prior to the meeting, as is required. So I understand that you're saying what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I fail to see how that really applies here, because the rules.
Actually, sir, I didn't say what's good for the goose.
I said, I said.
Liebling, idiot. So if I could just finish my remarks, I, I just want to point out, there's a case, H T Summerhill versus Township of New Brunswick Planning Board, where the mayor of the town lost his vote on the planning board for a particular application because he had already taken a public position on the application. That's what should have happened here. Ms. Sikora Ludwig should not be voting on this, should not be chairing the meeting. And ultimately, you know, the, the choices she has made have been choices that have rushed through this and the other application against the wishes of the community, and in many cases, silencing us and violating your own rules. If you didn't want to have objectors be able to make a case, you shouldn't have created a rule for objectors to be able to make a case. I brought this up before because I don't have a lawyer for this. I wanted to still be able to have every right to make the case. I bring it up every time, and you should have been prepared for it. And it seems here, you're not. You have rules that you're not following, that you have members with conflicts of interest. I've already brought up the mayor's representative still being here despite his role. And I didn't hear whether the other members of the board were even asked if they have conflicts of interest tonight. I know Mr. Chid did, they have to step aside, but did the other members get asked if they have conflicts of interest with regard to Devco or Rutgers?
Mr. Ital, just for the record, the first time I saw this application was when I received it through my planning board packet. So there was no way for me to support this application prior to that. That's all I'm saying. How much time is left, Dan?
My question.
Twenty seconds.
Do any of the other board members have conflicts of interest with respect to Devco or Rutgers?
Mr. Cardica did. I'm, I'm sorry, not Mr. Cardica, Mr. Chid did, and he was removed. He was recused.
It's time.
Okay. Is Mr. Vickers still on the board, or has he been replaced?
Mr. Vickers retired from the board at the end of the year.
Okay, and his replacement has a conflict of interest or no? Okay.
Your time is up, Mr. Cradaville. Next on the list, Dan.
Uh, next on the list is Matthew Mione. Can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Matthew Joseph Mione, that's M E O N I.
All right. Can you please swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yep.
All right, you're on.
Thank you. So I've got a few questions pertaining to this application that I would like to ask. Thank you, for sure. This one's pertaining to the actual, um, where'd that go? Oh, the actual, like, here. Sorry, I have a few questions I want to get through. All right. So on the civil site plan, the name, all the adjacent, adjacent property owners are listed. Have they been notified that the properties are going to be considered to get knocked on due to the applications?
I do know everybody within two hundred feet of the project was notified of the application.
And did they agree? To have their.
Given notice.
They're given notice, okay. So the, the plan is using eminent domain, correct?
I'm not stating that. I'm stating they were given notice of this application.
Oh, the application is possible to use eminent domain to take away their house?
I am not making any statement as to that, as this court doesn't have the authority to do that. We did not allow it under our redevelopment plan. That is something that may be in the MCI A, but not with us.
Okay, but it's a possibility.
Separate entity.
It's a possibility, though, is what you're saying.
I don't, I don't know what their agreement is.
Right, we just determined.
Okay, we can move on. We can move on. Okay. No need to interrupt me. Appreciate it. So I've got a question, another question. Why are plans for this application being approved if the funding court hasn't been determined yet?
I can answer that question. That, that's, that happens with, that happens more often than not. It's, people work on a project in various, in, in, in various steps at the same time, in parallel lines, and for your schools, while you're working on your design, while you're identifying your financing, while you're, while you're identifying your tenants, that's, that's the development process.
Appreciate the answer. And since my time is being counted against me for you answering, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to cut your answers off just to make sure I get my time in. Is that okay? So I'm not trying to be rude. Just want to throw that there. I also wanted to state as well that all the objections that were raised before the public comment about us only getting five minutes to cross-examine witnesses and have our public comment number one, definitely should, should have been heard. They all were relevant. The cases should have been allowed to make. And it doesn't state specifically that you have to have witnesses in order to make a case. It's not sufficient time to put into a five-minute window a long enough to have any witnesses. It's just amazing how rushed it really is. And clearly, the public is not in favor of this plan. At the very minimum, the public is just looking and asking for more time and consideration and more of a thought process put into this, because clearly, it hasn't been considered. Clearly, Charlie just showed right before me that the chair of this board has a clear conflict of interest. She may have not seen the plans before they were, you know, made public to the rest of the board, but if you're at the event where they announce this, the plan, the, the site being approved with the company, the contract being negotiated and accepted, I mean, at the end of the day, we know where you're going to stand. So yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a question. That's just the statement. Because you said we, it's public comment and questions rolled into one. So I'm going off of what you said. So no problem. I appreciate the clarification. But that's just what you said. So we're, I'm going off of what you said.
No, no, I'm stating that the meeting, the meeting that I was at was a public meeting. It was not a private invite meeting.
Okay, I wasn't answering your question. Okay. Just because you're, you're answering. Okay, I wasn't asking you a question. Okay. Just because you're, you're answering cuts into my time, so I don't want to cut my time short. I apologize to cut you off. If it didn't factor into my time, I would definitely let you speak and answer properly. But at this point, I'm not really allowed to, unfortunately, based off the rules that you arbitrarily instituted today. Which has never been enforced in any other meeting prior to this. So it is a little rather ridiculous if I do say so myself. But yeah, one final question, because I know my time's been. Does anyone on the board realize that the kids started school today in the warehouse? They actually got moved?
That has nothing to do with this board, sir.
Oh, it's part of the actual plan, though.
Yeah, time's up.
Time's up, sir.
Anyone have an answer to my?
Well, no, I, I will answer to the best that I can, but this board has, has no jurisdiction over the, the school board education. The Board of Education. We have no jurisdiction over what they do.
Oh, you can only buy it?
We, we don't buy it. We have nothing to do with the purchase of it. We have nothing to do with that at all. This board has nothing to do with it.
Just approve the plans after the school is, is bought under a secret deal?
No, we, we are not even allowed to consider that when we're making a decision on the plans. And your time is up there. I just wanted to try to give you a little answer for that. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for yours, too.
All right, next up is Danielle Moore. Can you please state your names, spell your last name for the record?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Danielle Moore, M O O R E. I live at 272 Hamilton Street. I just moved from 333 Somerset Street.
Do you swear or affirm, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You're on.
Uh, Ms. Support, excuse me, Ms. Ludwig, uh, do you live anywhere near Somerset Street?
I do not.
There. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the application or ask.
You do, you do it every time. Please do not interrupt me talking to kill my time like you did last time, please. I have the right to ask questions. And the reason why I'm asking is because I realized Mrs. Ludwig, where she's leading the board, other board members on her decision, telling them, oh, you have to vote now, you have to do this. Where how you're saying that you have nothing to do with this. This is a board education decision. That's a lie. You have every right to not vote no, to say you're against this. How you keep saying you don't have a part of this to try to make. No, this is all about you, where you can cancel this, vote no, and you're in charge of this, where you keep leading the other board members. Oh, yes, most vote, yeah, yes, at every meeting, and every time you hear something. Please do not interrupt me. Please, I'm doing my time. Do not interrupt me.
Okay.
Please, would you stop interrupting me, Mrs. Ludwig? You do it every time when you hear the truth, and please, please stop it. Because like I said, wow, you're making a big mistake for someone who doesn't live on Somerset, nowhere near Somerset Street, to see what goes on with traffic and all. This is going to be impossible to do out of all the projects, like I said, that are coming up. That's where you have another building by Rutgers, Robert Wood Johnson, built on a corner of Plum Street and Somerset Street. Another high-rise building where it's too much with the traffic due to where you don't attend to the traffic meetings. What type of roads that are be redone, French and Sedan Street, that's gonna have to be slowed down, delayed green light for, for ultimate turning. Wow, another project on French and Eastern Avenue has to be done. Due to where you're not focused and due to where you don't see the amount of flow with traffic in the area. And it's gonna be with all these cars coming. It's gonna be very bad. And like I said, with this, wow, honestly, it's sad to see due to where Mayor Cahill said the reason we're knocking down Memorial Parkway was because he didn't want any high-rise buildings. And what do you see, Rutgers, Robert Wood Johnson, Devco, building all these high-rise buildings? Due to where, what? This is no longer the city of New Brunswick. This is what? The city of Rutgers, Robert Wood Johnson, Devco, taking all our houses, our schools? And it's very sad, where I, I, I hope you, other members do not really let Ms. Ludwig lead you into voting yes. How she's been doing at every meeting, and I'm glad to see that it's on record. And it's very shameful due to where, how, I don't understand how you said at the last meeting that Somerset Street is not gonna be blocked off at no time. It will be all, all ways to be available for the ambulance due to what COVID-19. Wow, like I said, I live right over here. Do you know how many ambulances keep going back and forth to the hospital? And all the fire trucks in the area? That's gonna mess, mess it up. And like I said, it's already a situation with traffic. And like I said, it's the shame. I, I wonder what, do you have cancer? Does somebody in your family have cancer? Due to where you're just so ready, really wanting to vote yes without having all the stuff on paper, full detail. And it's sad to really see how they're doing that, Miss Ludwig. It's really shameful. Because I'm still trying to see what, like I said, another high-rise building from Robert Wood Johnson going on Plum Street. This one, I don't see how, due to where Robert Wood Johnson, this time, built a new helicopter over the, a, a helicopter station over the emergency room. Due to where you're saying that this is not going to interact with the, with the helicopter for trauma? That's not true. This, I don't see how you're gonna build a bridge connecting from Rutgers, the Rutgers Cancer Center to Robert Wood Johnson, where that goes right over Somerset Street. Where you're saying that Somerset Street is not gonna be cut off, cut off at all? Due to where what? You still have to knock down the building? How is that gonna be with the bulldozer or what? You, it's impossible for you to keep Somerset Street open while doing this, this project where I was told, what? This is gonna take three years to build? Come, come on, this is, this is outrageous. And like I said, I hope the rest of the board members really pay attention to what's going on. Due to where this is not just Ms. Ludwig's decision, this is yours too. And it's all about safety. And believe me, Mayor Cahill, anyone can tell you that, oh, I'm, I'm one of the most residents. And even Ms. Ludwig can tell you that I know more of the traffic issues than she does.
That's time, Danielle.
That's the beef for real. Like I said, wow, whenever you wanna, whenever you hear the truth, you always want to cut somebody else. I know good and well that wasn't my five minutes. But like I said.
Time's up, Ms. Moore. And before you go on, Dan, I'm just gonna make a statement I wanted on record that I never ask or direct any board members to vote in the affirmative or the negative. Each member of this board makes a valuation of the facts on, on their own. That's all I'll say to that, and we'll go on to the next person for questioning.
They couldn't postpone the last meeting. They had to hurry up and put their vote in. It's on record. You can't say that you didn't tell them that, okay, we can't hold off on this meeting.
Dan, do we have the next witness or next?
Yes, next is Thomas Olson. Thomas Olson, are you there?
I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Arvind, as, as he is an attorney, do I have to swear him in? He's acting up the heck.
Fine, so.
I'm not, no, I'm not testifying. I just have a few questions on behalf of my client. I don't, if it's okay, I'll proceed.
Do I run the clock or?
Go ahead.
All right.
Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna take five minutes. I am here on behalf of 28 Hardenberg Street LLC and 30 Hardenberg Street LLC. My name is Thomas Olson of the firm of McCurdy, Risk and Olson and Delapel. Those entities on block 51, lot 27 and 28, 28 Hardenberg Street and 30 Hardenberg Street. Maroon Chidid is the principal of those entities. Those structures contain residential buildings. And I, as I indicated, are owned by Mr. Chidid. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Lebling. Mr. Lebling, in order to, your client to build the project that is the subject before the planning board tonight, you would need to acquire these properties, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Now, will your client be contacting my client to discuss acquisition of those, of his property or?
Uh, my understanding is that contact has been, been made through, through Robert Johnson to all the property owners.
Okay, I'm not sure that that has happened yet, but perhaps it will. But Robert Wood Johnson would be conducting the negotiations?
That's, that, that, that's my understanding. My, I mean, my client can certainly, you know, become involved in that, but to, to, to date, that hasn't not occurred.
What would be the timing of this project? When, when would the actual, you actually would need my client's properties in order to begin construction?
Right now, the schedule calls for construction to start mid-year.
Mid 2020, 2021?
Mid 2021.
And my, this next question, I guess, is from Mr. Aethol. Mr. Aethol, I think you have indicated previously that the redevelopment area under which this project is proceeding is an area in need of rehabilitation and eminent domain would not be available, correct?
I don't do the municipal land use law, no.
Okay. All right. I mean, in closing, I just want to indicate that, again, this is my client's property. It's his private property. Very important and valuable to him. We just want, he just wants to be treated fairly. We just want to be treated fairly. So we look forward to hearing from you again, and thank you very much, and we'll see what happens. Thanks again. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yes, uh, all right. So next on the list is Michael Peterson. Uh, Michael Peterson, please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Uh, Michael Peterson, P E D E R S E N.
Uh, do you swear or affirm, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Of course.
You're on.
Awesome. Um, so I have a traffic question. Reading the traffic report, I think it's on page 14. This is a direct quote, I believe. Under the first building condition, without the inclusion of the 351 parking spaces in the garage, all movements are expected to operate at LOS D or better during the weekday morning peak hour and LOS E or better during the weekday evening peak hour. The exception is the northbound approach during the weekday evening, which is expected to continue to operate at LOS F. While the parking, while the project delay exceeds the 50-second threshold for level of service E operations, a maximum of three additional vehicles is projected to be added to the queue from the no-build condition. Additionally, the analysis does not suggest the northbound approach queue will block the downstream intersection at Conduct Street. That's the Hardenberg Street and, well, you know. So I just have a que, how is that acceptable? Yes, I can.
I testified as part of the Cancer Pavilion. That approach will experience additional delay. And the only option to better operations would be to remove onsite parking so that you could stripe two lanes. And I don't think the city has the appetite to remove onsite or on-street parking in this area. So we are left with a constrained situation in terms of additional delay because of additional traffic with no way to provide additional lanes. This is not isolated to this particular intersection. There are many intersections across New Brunswick with similar conditions. And as it relates to stop-controlled intersections, particularly those that are near the central business district area, these are typical operations.
Okay, um, now, this is, I don't think this is a question for you, so we're gonna move on. I was looking at the sewer report also. So in the sewer report, it compares the average sewage flow rate for residential properties and part, and the parking garages. Is this done because the project does intend to knock down residential properties in the area?
Correct. The current location of garage is proposed. There are several existing residential structures that are in place. Those would be demolished as part of the construction of the garage. So that's why they were included in the sewer report and tabulating the overall anticipated sewer flow from the project. What we did was we calculated the anticipated flow from the garage, and then we subtracted out the flow from the residential properties, which would be removed. Get our overall net decrease in flow. And the reason I say it's a net decrease is because the existing flow is higher than what's being proposed for the parking garage.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions, sir?
More of a comment. Um, you know, I, I work in New Brunswick and I'm, I'm not a big fan of this. Obviously, the traffic's gonna get worse. We heard the traffic is gonna get worse. You plan to knock down residential structures. You're most likely going to try to use eminent domain, because let's be honest, that's what you people do. It's just not right. Throwing kids in a warehouse, it's just not correct. Um, if any of your kids were going into warehouse, you would be pissed. And so it's just, it's very wrong. I yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list.
Next up is Jim Puskas. Is he there?
Yes, here I am.
Can you state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Jim Puskas, P U S K A S. I have.
To tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Uh, I do. I have the property at 16 Hardingburg. And Thomas Olson expressed the same concerns I had, so I really don't have anything further to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Arlie Rubens. Are you there?
Yes, before you start my time, I want to make it clear that this is my commentary. I won't be asking questions, so interjections won't be necessary.
All right, um, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Arlie Rubens, R U B E N S.
Do you swear or affirm, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You're on.
As it's been stated several times over the course of this meeting that the parking garage is specifically tied to the larger Cancer Pavilion project, it's relevant to discuss the conflicts of interest present in the project as a whole. Some of us may know that three planning board members withdrew themselves from this process due to conflicts of interest, but that doesn't mean all conflicts of interest have been eliminated. Planning board members are appointed by the mayor, not elected by the public, so while Mayor Cahill isn't voting in these proceedings, every member who will be voting has been placed on the board by the mayor himself. It's not a stretch to imagine that board members, hands-elected by the mayor, might share some of his political goals and interests, but there are also some concerning signs of pay-to-play politics. Multiple board members have donated hundreds to thousands of dollars to Mayor Cahill's reelection campaigns, including Mr. Bignell, Mr. Dominguez, Mr. Stellatella, and Mr. Carley. Perhaps the most alarming contributions come from Ms. Sikora Ludwig, who, in addition to donating and receiving payment as a quote-unquote cancer worker during the past campaign, serves as vice president of the New Brunswick Democratic Organization, a group openly tied to Cahill's mayoral candidacy that donated nearly $11,000 to his 2000. The financial ties of these board members to the mayor are significant, because Cahill has also received money from and given to developers, R W J associates, and in some egregious cases, developers who are also R W J. As Ryan Berger attempted to accuse himself at one meeting because he serves as a representative of Cahill, it's hard to imagine why the rest of the board wouldn't be considered representative of his. One of these friends of Cahill is developer Robert Paulus, owns the warehouse that will serve as Timbuktu school for the Lincoln Attic students. Forty-band digas has been used as a holding space for groups of displaced students in the past. And Robert Paulus profits from every instance of student displacement in the city of New Brunswick. Personally, through his development company, Wick Companies, and through some of his 46 shell companies, Robert Paulus has donated thousands of dollars to Mayor Cahill's election funds, and the money goes both ways. Friends of Jim Cahill, his reelection PAC, paid one of Paulus's LLCs for hosting an urban mayor's meeting at a restaurant that didn't exist at the time. And New Brunswick Today was unable to trace any basic information about the event. The Cancer Pavilion Development Project feeds directly into these unethical dealings by creating another profitable displacement for a friend of Jim Cahill. Jack Morris, CEO of Edgewood Properties, Inc., has donated one of his Jersey Ave properties to serve as the site of the new school. But what looks like a generous donation on the surface is actually yet another conflict of interest, because Morris also happens to be a Robert Wood Johnson trustee who stands to profit from this development. As part of the development plan for the Cancer Pavilion, R W J directors took responsibility for funding a replacement school. But Jack Morris was the chair of the board of trustees at R W J, through June 2019. He remains the chair of R W J University Hospital. Coincidentally, Morris's donation also skims a bit off the top of R W J's bill for this development. I also want to acknowledge the role of Mr. Aethol is a law partner of Bob Smith, who since 2011 has received over $20,000 in campaign donations from Developers PAC, a fundraising arm of the Developers Association, which includes our good friend on the call, Mr. Palladino, the CEO of Devco as a member. While Mr. Aethol feared himself of any conflicts of interest at a previous meeting, it's absurd and insulting to suggest that he should not be associated with his law partner or his firm's history when he's appearing at this meeting under the name Bob Smith and Associates. To conclude, a board appointed by him passes checks from R W J trustees and developers cannot reasonably be trusted to consider the interests of the public over the same trustees and developers. be trusted to consider the interests of the public over the same trustees and developers. These proceedings are the product of a huge web of conflicts of interest. This is unethical, and if the board continues to deny and ignore this reality, legal action is the only option for people of New Brunswick to be seen and heard by the people who are meant to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, before you get your next person, just for the record, I would like to clarify that I have never served as vice president of the New Brunswick Democratic Organization.
That's weird, because your name appears on the website. So that's a really weird error. They should probably fix that up.
My name may appear on that website as vice counsel, as vice president of city council, but never the New Brunswick Democratic Organization. I think you're just-
That's okay. I'll drop the link in the chat referring to that.
Okay.
All right. Next up is Miguel Romero. You there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you please state your name, spell your last name?
Last name's Romero, R O M E R O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
You're on. You're on.
Okay, so I'd like to start out by asking a little bit of clarification on the procedure, because it was a little bit confusing that at the beginning you were saying that you were going to put both the comments on the specific issue of the parking deck and general comments into one five-minute section. So I would like to have some clarification on that.
No, there's, 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 care is public. This is the, this is the comment portion for the application. And then, as always, after the application is finished, there's public comment before we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thanks. I have a question. Are the board members' addresses available publicly online?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I think it's a little bit weird that you're asking for every commenter's home address as part of your, as part of asking questions about the parking garage. My next question is, so when, why was it not a good idea, or when, when did you think of that disclosing that you were going to have a fossil-fueled power station as part of the parking garage? When, when did you think that was going to be a good idea to disclose that information? Why is it only being disclosed so, so late into the, into the process?
Chris, maybe you can respond. It's been, it's been on a very long time.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, there's some echoing. Chris, maybe you, it's been on the plant for a very long time. Chris Roche.
I had a little trouble hearing over, over the echo, Chuck, but I think the question was not necessarily about the plant, but just the timing on when the information on the plant was going to be released. My knowledge, this is not the first time the Pavilion Utility Plant was mentioned. There's been discussions of public meetings previously regarding the plant.
So the plan for the, for this parking garage was not disclosed until much later. We've been going to planning board meetings, city council meetings, and this parking garage with a very boring component, which is the power, power plant presentation, power plants aspect of it, was not disclosed until, you know, what, like one meeting ago or two meetings ago? So I want to know who, like, how is that determined, and why is it being disclosed? What happens if, like, the power plant aspect of the plan does not get approved for very obvious reasons? So what's going to happen with the rest of the plan?
The, first of all, it was submit, it was, the plans for the garage were submitted simultaneously with, for the plans with, for the pavilion. That was a number of months ago. So it was, it was, that information was available then. In any case, if it doesn't get approved, we would have to come back to the, this board and seek revisions to the site plan for the Cancer Pavilion in order to accommodate the utility functions that the utility plant in the garage would have otherwise been furnishing. And that would, you know, result in additional costs, inefficiencies, whatever, but that is what we would have to do.
I see. To my understanding, that did not happen. The first time that we heard from this fossil-fuel power station was not until one or two meetings ago. So this is not, this is not something that has been brought up to the community with sufficient time or with sufficient openness to be able to be discussed. I would like to ask, what is the estimate of how many greenhouse gases are going to be emitted to the community with this fossil-fuel power station?
We don't have any witnesses that can answer that question.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
Yes, I do. So do you not, do you also not have an estimate of what the impact of the, of these greenhouse gases are going to be to the residents of New Brunswick?
There's a permitting process that takes place with the Department of Environmental Protection for facilities such as this. We will be required to go through it. We will be required to submit all that information. They will review it, and they will approve it, deny it, modify it in accordance with state law. It's not, it's not a matter for the planning board.
It's not a matter to the planning board, even though that power station is going to be in the garage that you're proposing to build currently?
Correct. It's, it's within the garage. The, the planning board is, is reviewing the site plan. It's, it is, it is placed within the garage, and therefore, it is, it is, it is the building itself and its, its footprint that the planning board is, is reviewing. And I'll certainly, I don't mean to be stepping at all on Mr. Ital's privilege here to respond to that kind of question.
Mr. Leibling.
Also, that's time, by the way, but just putting that into the record.
Yeah. Mr. Leibling, the issue really is whether your client will be able to comply with NJDEP, gee, try this again, I'm sorry, NJDEP regulations, because they have oversight over the power plant, the utility plant, I should say. So if they, in fact, cannot comply with it, NJDEP will not issue the, the enabling permits, and you won't be able to construct the utility portion in the parking garage, and you would have to come back for a revised site plan to locate it someplace else. But the condition, if this board were to approve, certainly would be that you obtain outside agency approval that have jurisdiction over a number of things, including the NJDEP has approval authority over the permitting.
And we absolutely understand and accept that, and that is-
Yeah, the power plant is a big concern. That's a huge concern. It's hard to believe that in this day and age, we'd be replacing a solar panel building with a fossil-fuel power plant, which we're not even being told what kind of fossil fuels, but-
It's, it's, it's natural gas. It's just not relevant to the planning board's review. That's, that was the source of my reluctance to get into it. It's a natural gas-powered plant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, what I really want to get to this traffic situation, because this is absurd. I mean, I'm just looking, I'm looking through the level of, you know, the level of service, going in some cases from B and C to C and C, you know, then with the, with the building of the parking deck, goes to C and C, and then with the additional parking spaces, it goes down to D and F. How, I, I want to echo my fellow citizens. How, how is that okay? The park, the, well, the parking is horrible, too, but the traffic situation in this city is horrendous. So, you know, I'm looking at the breakdown of, and it's hard for me to believe that, you know, another almost 500 cars coming out in the peak hour. And when you say peak hour, so the study was over two hours, but the peak hour is just in that one hour. This table refers to one hour. It says weekday PM, peak hour, 376. Oh, I don't know why the figures he were, he was reading were slightly different, but I'm looking at Table 1 on the website, and it says a total of 487 additional cars coming out during that hour. Anybody that lives or works in the neighborhood and has tried to get anywhere during rush hour knows that, like, common sense would tell you another 500 cars would be a nightmare. It's horrible already. The traffic gets gridlocked at a lot of, see, these particular intersections I don't go through. But when you're coming across town, if you have to come, as I often do, from the area by St. Peter's Hospital over to the public library during the evening rush hour, you have to pass, you know, first on Lewis Street, and then, you know, Sedan Street going over. So you're passing all these intersections. You have to pass Hamilton Street. You know, you start on Eastern Avenue, horrible traffic, and they're saying a certain percentage of the traffic is going to go over to Eastern Avenue. Great. Then you have to come across the intersection at, it's, you know, at Hamilton Street, which is going to get worse. It's already horrible. You sit through multiple lights at these intersections. Somerset Street, another horrible one. Don't, French Street, horrible. You sit through multiple lights, and sometimes the traffic gets gridlocked with the cars coming the other way. And I can't even imagine what happens at the intersections that don't have lights. I won't go on them, because I know you're just going to get stuck there, and you have to be really aggressive to even ever get out. So I don't like to be aggressive, so I just go with the lights. But it is a horrendous situation. I mean, not right this minute, because Rutgers isn't in session, and, you know, a lot of people aren't driving to work right now, but just in general. Like, from the time this was done, I can't believe how they came to the conclusion that it would make a significant difference. It would make an already terrible situation significantly worse. And, and how is that okay?
Minute warning.
Yeah, that's, that's not okay. And it's, and I believe it was referred, like, so if, in fact, this situation became so intolerable that it needed to be remediated, it was said that, that, so these are city streets, so the city would have to do something. And it was referred to a, a public assessment. And that sounds like taxes. Correct me if I'm wrong. A public assessment to pay for the remediation of the, of the totally unnecessary problem that's being created, expanded parking deck? Public assessment refers to taxing. That means taxes, right? Could the person who referred to a public assessment to remediate the parking, the, the traffic problem, please clarify that public assessment refers to taxes?
That's time.
Nobody's going to tell me if that's what it means.
Your time's up, Mr. And who's next on the list, Dan?
And nobody's going to clarify that comment about the public assessment to fix the traffic problem?
Our next up is Victor Vaughn.
Well, apparently not.
Yeah, I'm here.
Victor Vaughn, can you please state your name, spell your last name?
Yeah, V A U G H N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
As much truth as this committee has been given.
You're on.
Okay. So who's going to answer that question about a public assessment coming out of taxes?
Can you ask the question, please?
Yeah, somebody made a statement about a public assessment in case that, like, remediation would need to be made, right? If the study, you know, that was done during COVID, when everybody's working from home, and everybody's back out on the road, and suddenly, like, you know, your whole traffic assessment is wrong, and something has to be fixed. I believe someone did state that it would take, you know, a, a public assessment that would come out of taxes for the city to fix that?
Madam Chair, this is-
I, I don't believe the city would be charged for the traffic report. Is that what you're referring to? If they have to do a new report, we wouldn't be charged for that.
Okay. I have a follow-up question. What's your address?
Excuse me?
What's your address?
I don't have to give you my address.
Madam Chair, that's not, that's not relevant to the-
So how is my address relevant to me speaking?
Because you're being sworn in.
All right. And you can't list your address or give us your address?
We, we do public disclosures, and I think that that's still not relevant to the application itself. I, I'm not trying to cut you off, but you might want to focus on the application.
Okay. Do you feel any sense of remorse for the lives of the children that have been disrupted due to this? I'll take your lack of answer.
Who are you asking, sir? Who are you addressing that comment to?
The entire board. So you can go first if you want to answer.
This board has no role in what the Board of Education does. That's my comment.
I'm not asking about that. I'm asking if you feel any sense of remorse for it?
I have no comment on that.
So that's a no. Okay. Anybody else on the board?
It's not a, it's not a no. It is a no comment.
It sounds like a no.
Can proceed if you have further questions.
Would I be able to give my time to Charlie Cravavalli?
No.
So you were never the, have the board for the Democratic, whatever the hell that thing was?
If you can give me the name of the board, I can give you an answer.
Uh, let's see here. Jan M. Sikora Ludwig, Community Involvement in the New Brunswick Democratic Organization.
I have been involved with that organization. I was never in office or-
District 4 for the Middlesex County Democratic Organization in 2007, and reelected, reelected each term to date. Appointed to the planning board of the city of New Brunswick over 10 years, elected to positions of vice chair and chair by her peers.
Yeah.
So that information that was given before was not inaccurate?
It absolutely wasn't accurate. She stated that I was vice president of the New Brunswick Democratic Organization, and I have never held an office in that organization.
Right, you were-
I'm not sure how this is rela, I'm not sure how this is relevant to the matter at hand, but-
Madam Chair, it's really not.
Nobody asked you. Bob Smith and Associates.
Do you have any questions relevant to this application?
I literally just wanted an answer for, like, if any of you felt any sense of remorse for your involvement.
One minute warning.
Willing to give any kind of, you know, answer towards, like, you know, if the reassessment for the traffic plan would come out of the city in taxes.
Madam Chair, if there are no other questions, maybe we should move on to the next speaker.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
Yeah, hang on one second. Can I get the Google Docs?
What kind of Google Doc? Is there anyone on the line still?
Sorry. How are you adding vehicles to the queue yet increasing time of service operations?
Time.
Your time's up, sir. Who's next on the list, Dan?
I believe the last person is, we missed on the first go, is John Luke Borger.
There are other speakers who would like to be added to the list who did not have a chance at the beginning of the meeting to be called on.
Who's next, Dan?
I believe that's John Luke Borger. I believe that's John Luke Bourget.
Are you there, sir? Mr. Bourget? Is there anyone else on the list, Dan?
There is no one else on the list.
Yeah, there are other members of the public who would like to speak who didn't have a chance to be called on in the beginning.
Hello?
And, um, if I may, Madam Chair, we went through-
Yeah.
The entire alphabet and we asked, uh, several times if there was anyone that wasn't called. Uh, chair's prerogative if, uh, if there's a motion to close the public portion.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we did. We, we asked three times and then we just stated it again.
Hello, excuse me, I'm in the same room as Mr. Bourget and I'd like to pass the mic to them so they may speak.
Uh, hello, members of the board. I am sorry, I've been experiencing many technical difficulties tonight. Uh, may I still have my time to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I have several questions-
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Yes, sir, sorry. John Luke Bourget, 116 Lewis Street, New Brunswick.
Can you spell Bourget for me?
Yes, B O U R G E T.
Okay, do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, sir. All right, um, so in the, uh, water report submitted, um, in December, uh, how was the gallons per day, G P D estimate water usage peaking factor uh, based on, for the parking garage?
Water demands are calculated in accordance with straight criteria. New Jersey Administrative Code dictates, um, projected water demands, um, depending on what the use of a property is. It's different for residential uses or parking garage uses. And I believe we estimated based on anticipated number of employees within the parking garage.
I see. And what sort of facilities will be used, uh, or, or will use water in the parking garage?
Um, we're still finalizing the design of the parking garage. There, there may be a bathroom facility in that area.
I see, there may be. All right. Um, current estimated usage for the proposed site as it is stands at, uh, 3,675 gallons per day, G P D. Uh, estimated use for the project is only 450 G P D, a net loss of 3,225 D P D. How will this decrease in water usage benefit the city and where would that be directed? If it would?
Oh, it's somewhat the sanitary sewer question someone had asked previously about the, the calculated demand. The way we did it is we calculated what the existing demand is on site with the residential structures. And then we calculated what the proposed demand would be for the parking garage. In both cases, you end up having a decrease in demand. Um, to answer your question, what we do for the city, it's just a slight decrease in, in the amount of water being utilized by those properties from the city water department.
I see. Sorry, New Brunswick has a history of difficulty with, uh, water. Um, since water usage is estimated to be greatly decreased, why does the existing sin- six-inch water main beneath Hardingburg Street, uh, needs to be upgraded?
In-driving factor and upgrading the size of that line wasn't necessarily the parking garage itself, it was really the Camp River Pavilion project as well.
Oh, I see. I, I thought, um, this comment section was just, uh, relegated to the parking deck. Are you acknowledging that these projects are inexorably linked?
I understand your question. I was trying to answer your question from a technical perspective, why that water line is being increased in size.
Right, I'm terribly sorry. I hope I did not come across as rude. Um, I do have a few more questions. Um, the revised and original water report say, uh, they refer to drawing C U 101 for plans such as the Hardingburg Street Water Man. However, the page containing C U 101 is almost cut off by about half in both submissions. Uh, what is the plan for that? And how can it be justified that the planning board moved forward with this plan when a submission document was, uh, had a significant page that was cut off by almost half?
One minute.
I don't know what you're referring to. The P D F plan sets and the hard copy plan sets, we submitted a full-size sheets that included the entirety of the plan.
In the copy provided to the public on the City of New Brunswick website, um, the water report, uh, has its last page, which contains C U 101, uh, cut off by almost half. Uh, how can we provide proper commentary on a project like this? If we don't have all of the facts from projects like this?
To clarify your question, you're talking about the water report itself? P D F that you looked at?
Yeah. Yes, it was strictly incomplete.
Chris, can you-
That is a separate P D F as part of the site plan set.
Yeah, look, this is, Dan Dominguez jumping in real quick. Did you say the utility plant C U 101 is half cut off?
Yes, in the water report, um, I can look up the date for it.
Aerial site plan application?
Uh, no, this is the water report submitted, um, uh, on December. No, originally submitted August, uh-
Yes. So I think, I think the issue is that since the P D F is very large, it didn't load. I'll share it right now just to prove that it actually, uh, worked. The, um-
And I was able to download it.
Fully, uh, fully loaded and, uh, C U 101, so it's just very large files. So it even took my computer a very long time to upload it. So that's like what happened.
I see. And several, um, several of the notes-
Your time has expired, sir.
I see. Thank you, uh, City Planning Board for your time. May we continue to better serve the glorious city of New Brunswick.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Now I'll ask for a motion to close the public portion.
Um, hello? Is it too late to, uh, ask a question?
At, at this point in the meeting, yes, it is. There's another point for public comment coming up.
You're not going to give me five minutes?
Is there a motion from the board?
All publics are, all public, all members of the public are entitled to five minutes of their public comment section. If they didn't have the chance to get signed up at the beginning, maybe they were- they can call at any point for their five minutes.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Uh, I wanted to ask, uh, this Bob Cardika, just, um, a question prior to, um, uh, forwarding a motion on this, uh, on this application. Um, yeah.
Can you, can you do it after we close the public portion, Bob?
Oh, yes, I thought it was closed.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking for, I'm asking for a motion to close the public portion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Go ahead.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for a motion to move the, to move the application, just to close the public portion.
Are you putting out on the record that you're denying someone the right to speak?
Is there a motion from the board?
There is a member of the public who'd like to speak.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. I have a question, ma'am.
And might, we might need to, uh, to mute the public?
Excuse me?
People left to speak.
Are you really silent to us? Ma'am, I have a question, please.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Did you not earlier say earlier that there's going to be a comment and a public comment section?
Motion to close-
You don't have any motions.
This is anti-Italian discrimination.
You don't have any motions to do anything, but you do have members of the public who would like to speak who are entitled to that right. You have no motions from the board, but you do have members of the public who are requesting their five minutes that they are entitled to.
I'm, I'm muting as I go. Yalitza Checo motion, by the way.
Yes, is there-
Anyone who's-
This is illegal, there will be a lawsuit. We have the right to speak.
Any litigation that comes out of this. I'll put my contact in the chat.
There's a member of the public who is willing to speak.
So there are still members in the public that are willing to speak?
I would like to speak.
We need to speak. This is incredibly-
Hello? Hello, miss? I'm miss, miss, I'm sorry, I'm-
Dan, are you working on this?
There are members of the public-
There's a parking on them.
To speak?
This is really important. People need to be having a right to speak.
So you're just denying people's ability-
So you're just muting whoever's going to try and stop, oh my God.
You're building a power plant.
You're going to stop anyone who tries to speak, you're going to stop members of the public from having their rights? What they're legally already entitled to.
It's just a matter of your money.
What's going to come up in people's suits. I'm telling you right now that you'll hear about the fact that members are being, that members of the public are being denied their right by this council that they have.
Does the freedom of speech only apply to Nazis in this country?
A point of order, I think people still need to speak.
Certainly, we have interested members-
Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
I muted everyone but you right now.
Okay, can we unmute the board member?
Yes.
Let me know when we have them.
I'm, I'm working through them.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Sikora Ludwig, I believe that I've unmuted or requested unmuting of all, uh, members of the board. They would need to, uh, manually unmute themselves with the request that I sent them.
Okay. Do I have all board members present?
This is Ryan Berger.
Yalitza Checo.
Bob Cardika, I'm here.
Anyone else? You need to unmute yourselves? Who else is still on the call, Dan?
Uh, just going through it, hold on.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting for, uh, the board members to, to reconvene, I, I note that the time is almost 11, oh, I'm sorry, 10:30.
Yes, I want to reconvene, just close this portion, and then I was going to make a statement that we're going to be continuing. You know, continuing the application tomorrow.
I've submitted requests to John Petralino, Diana Lopez, and Matt Ferguson. So if you guys need to mute-
I'm here and unmuted, Matt Ferguson.
Okay, thank you. Diana? You're on the phone, it's star six. Let me go back. Uh, where is she?
Uh, Dan, if you could also unmute, uh, the attorney for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, just give me one second, I'm still looking for, uh, for Diana.
Petralino here.
Okay, thank you, John, I so John's.
Sorry, second before.
Diana Lopez, I, uh, sent her again and where's Chuck, there's Chuck. I sent Chuck a, uh-
This is me here.
All right, hold on. Ryan, Ryan, uh, where's Ryan? Ryan muted himself.
I think we have everyone, right?
All right, no, I, I think, yeah. They have. Diana, did you say something? Or is Diana here?
I think she is.
Yeah, I thought she, I thought I heard her.
So now we have the motion to close the public portion. Who made that motion?
Uh, Yalitza Checo.
Was there a second?
Ryan Berger.
Ryan Berger. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please, Dan?
On the motion to close?
Just for closing the public portion, please, yes.
Uh, Yalitza Checo.
Yes.
Matthew Ferguson.
Yes.
Suzanne Sikora Ludwig. Suzanne?
Yeah.
Brian Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez? There's Diana Lopez. Uh, did she drop out? Diana may have been disconnected. Screen is, she shows as muted. Don't, don't see her. Uh, do, do you know what? She's near.
Dan, does this need to be a unanimous consent in order to move?
No.
Just go with the majority.
Just, just the majority.
All right, so can, let's maybe just proceed. If we may.
Uh-
Yes.
Petralino.
All right, so, so the public portion of the meeting is closed. Now, Bob, you had a, did you have a question you wanted to address?
Uh, yes, I apologize, um, if I'm being redundant, I'm sure I am, but I just wanted to clarify in its consideration of this site plan, um, uh, this question for Mr. Eitholz. Eitholz, it would be inappropriate or perhaps il- illegal, as I understand it, pursuant to municipal land use law, uh, for board members to consider the, the lack of information that we've received with regard to the financing for this parking deck in its consideration of this application. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's not within the, the, uh, the powers that are delegated to the board in terms of what they can consider determining whether an application should be approved or denied. The municipal land use law lays out those, uh, those items that you're supposed to look at in terms of a site plan application. And it include the financing of the project, whether it's a publicly financed or privately financed, or how that financing is going to come about.
Well, certainly, I, I agree, and if you, uh, you so direct, I will follow your direction, but, you know, quality of life, of course, is an issue. It seems like that is related. Yeah. Um, seems that this is related in that regard. Um, uh, and one other, uh, question, just there are no variances requested, correct?
So this is a variance-free application, that's correct.
Okay.
And not to cut you off, uh, Mr. Cardika, but, uh, Ms. Ludwig, if, if you, as the, the time is now 10:30, a little bit past 30, uh, if there was, um, uh, ever a natural time, I guess, to a natural break, this might be it.
Yes, I was just going to ask if Mr. Leblin would like to do his closing tonight and we could pick up with board discussion tomorrow? Or if he would like to save his closing for tomorrow?
Uh, I will leave that to you. Yeah, I, I, I mean, it's not lengthy, um, I can, I can certainly do it now. And then I guess that would leave tonight to move towards discussion of, of whether or not the board's going to approve the application. Um, so it's, uh, it's, it's up to you, Madam Chair.
And, and I just want to ask the other board members, um, would they, are they available to listen to the closing arguments? And we still have to do public portion, that's, that's regardless, but would you prefer to hear? I'm going to say I'd like to hear your closing arguments now if they're not lengthy, and then we can pick up on your application, um, with board discussion tomorrow. So if we can proceed that way.
Sure, that's absolutely fine. Okay. Um, certainly, we greatly appreciate your, your efforts and your, um-
Um, certainly, we greatly appreciate your, your efforts and your, um, patience and your consideration of this, of this application, uh, tonight. Um, unfortunately, so much of it, your time was, was taken up with, um, commentary that really didn't have, doesn't have anything to do with what a planning board does, and you've heard, there've been questions about it, and Mr. Eitholz has, has made that clear. Um, I, I don't doubt the passion of the members of the public who, um, were asking these questions, but, um, the board has a limited jurisdiction. Um, I want to assure you that whatever was said, um, any use of the power of eminent domain by any governmental authority with the authority to use it will be exercised in full accordance with the law, as it must be. Um, the power plant, um, is a permitted use under the redevelopment plan. Um, it lies within the footprint of the building. How it's operated, and, and, and how, what it's composed of, is our, our technical matters, um, that don't go before the board anymore than, than the, you know, the, the plumbing, or the, um, the, uh, electrical, uh, information about a building. This is, these are things that are reviewed by officials, and particularly with respect to a, a power plant requires DEP permitting. All those necessary permits will be required, and, and they will be included in your, in your, uh, resolution, undoubtedly. Um, you know, it's, it's, it, it goes beyond what a planning board does, and you know that. Um, continue questioning about the need for the parking garage. The parking garage is required by the redevelopment plan, and it's what's more, what we're, what we're proposing, um, in addition to meeting the requirement, is permitted. Um, so, so, you know, you, you, I, I, you can understand how to evaluate the objections, uh, to that, you know, it's not, it's not really something that we can, we, we can address. Um, the, um, the, there are people who are asking the board to turn down the application because you're supposed to feel remorse, or, or, or the given objector doesn't like it, or whatever it might be. We know what the law says. The standard review is that if the applicant is able to show that the site plan complies with the redevelopment plan, it's entitled to an approval, subject to reasonable conditions. We believe we've made that showing. We therefore request that you approve the application, subject to all those conditions, and again, thank you for your, your patience and your consideration.
Alright, thank you for your time tonight, sir, and we will continue with, uh, board discussion tomorrow when we pick up at 7:00 PM. For your application.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, John Petrolino making a motion to adjourn and continue tomorrow.
Uh, no, we cannot do that because we have to have public, uh, public comment portion for every meeting, so now we're going to move into the public comment portion of our meeting.
So, Madam Chair, for, for point of clarity, so we now must go through public comment in order to close tonight's meeting, which was scheduled to end at 10:30, correct?
Yeah.
Well, a, a, as I advised the board, uh, I have a hard stop at 10:30, so, uh, I'll be back for the vote tomorrow, but, uh, I, I will not be participating in the public comment portion at this point, so, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we're now preparing to open up the meeting to public comment, and Dan, if you would unmute and take a look.
Sure, just, uh, just give me one second, I'll grab a piece of paper. Wait, um, where is he? Arvin, were you trying to say something?
I hit that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we maintain quorum. I know that Mr.-
We, we, we do still have quorum. We have six.
So if the records can just reflect that at, uh, I think this is now 10:41, Mr. Petrolino, um, excused himself from the meeting.
Alright. Okay, um-
Quorum is maintained.
Alright, uh, let's, alright, so I'll read the bit, and then, uh, and then we'll, uh, I'll work on it, meaning the, the, the public. Uh, where's my-
Thank you.
Oh, that's the wrong app. Alright. There we go. Alright. Excuse me. At this moment, we are preparing to open the meeting to general public comment for five minutes per person, in order to assure that the planning board can hear from the interested public, and the public can hear public comments. I've organized the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call-in. At that time, I will ask that those with the last name starting with A, provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm that the information is correct, and then move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. On completion of asking for all the last names from A to Z. Are you, are you saying something, Arvin?
No, sorry.
Alright, I'll ask one more time for anyone who wants to be placed on initial list of speakers. We'll then move to the list of speakers by calling the person by name, and permitted in five minutes to speak. Uh, once we complete the list, I will then close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted, and to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. Unless, if you please, remain silent when I initially unmute the phones, so we can all hear each other and begin the speaker registration process. And to that effect, uh, those members of the public who are, uh, currently unmuted, if you could mute yourselves, uh, be helpful for the purposes of feedback, I would appreciate it. Um, so just give me one second to unmute the lines. Uh, yeah, so this is, uh, I believe, I'm going to hit unmute all. I don't know if it's a, I think everyone will have to manually unmute themselves, but I have unmuted the call-in line, and I will ask that any member of the public who would like to comment, uh, general public comment, uh, to, with the last name starting with A, please state your full name and home address. Uh, I have unlocked the muting, and, uh, you'll need to use either the microphone button or, uh, star six to unmute yourself, uh, when you're on the phone versus on the computer. So I'll, uh, begin going through the alphabet now. A, B, C.
Uh, B, B for Jean-Luc Orgey, 116 Lewis Street.
Noted, Mr. Orgey, thank you. Uh, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K.
Can you hear me?
No, well, I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry.
C. We have one for C and D.
Okay, C first.
Hi, uh, Chevalier, I live at 50 Jones Street.
Chevalier 50 Jones. Alright, um, thank you. Uh, there was a D?
Yes, Mika Deitch, D-E-I-T-C-H.
D-
50 Jones Street.
D-E-I-T-C-H, was that Demika Deitch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, alright, so then I think we were on, uh, K.
Elizabeth Saccani.
Alright. Elizabeth Saccani, alright. Alright, uh, so now back to K.
Charlie Cradaville.
Alright. Address, Mr. Cradaville.
143 Sedan Street.
Thank you.
Second order.
H-I-J-K-L.
Danielle Moore.
That's on M, but I'll get you, Ms. Moore. Um, is there anyone for L? Alright, Danielle Moore, I have you for M. Anyone else for M?
Matthew Mione.
Thank you.
Matthew Mione. N, O, P, Q, R.
Arlie Rubens.
Arlie Rubens. S.
R for, uh, Miguel Romero.
Okay, Miguel Romero.
Miss Stork, S-T-O-R-K.
Alright. Got you, Miss Stork. Um, T, U, V.
Victor Vaughn, V-A-U-G-A-N.
Alright, Victor Vaughn. W, T-U-V, W-X-Y-Z. Alright, um, so the first person up is Jean-Luc Orgey. Uh, let me just get the primer going, and you're on.
Hello, once again, esteemed members of the planning board, um, I would just like to say that I think, um, there has been more than enough evidence presented to the board to plant seeds of doubt in your minds about various topics. Um, various issues have been raised tonight about the dubious aspects of this plan. Many aspects are still, uh, uncertain, and I, you keep saying that it is the duty of the planning board to only approve, um, applications and whatnot as presented and submitted, but I have a hard time believing that it is not also part of your, uh, duty to, uh, to think about the implications of these plans. Um, I was ready to present a case tonight under, uh, New Brunswick rule, um, but that was, that opportunity was cut down. Um, the bulk of what I was going to present was about, um, the traffic impacts that will be had on our city beyond the scope of the traffic report. For example, uh, as it stands, since, uh, the Lincoln Annex School currently, um, is in the heart of a thriving neighborhood, uh, it only needs about two to three short buses to meet its students' needs for transportation. Uh, New Brunswick, uh, the New Brunswick Public School System provides transportation to students who reside more than two miles away for grades K through eight, and two and a half miles away for grades nine through 12, uh, for their assigned schools. And in accord, and this is in accordance with State law 18A, tolling 39 dash 1. The, um, project site is 1.7 miles away from the temporary school facility at 40 Van Dyke Ave. This will doubtless lead to a huge increase in, uh, the amount of school transportation, uh, resources that will be needed to transport, uh, essentially the entire student body to Lincoln Annex School, since the vast majority of the Lincoln Annex will fall outside of these outlines, which will create a enormous, uh, traffic issue around the site, the 40 Van Dyke Ave site, because, uh, 40 Van Dyke Ave is a small street, and Jersey Ave, as, uh, Dallas, we all know, is just a two-lane road that cannot reasonably handle that amount of traffic because the scope of this student relocation is, uh, unprecedented in the history of, uh, New Brunswick school relocation, which, uh, New Brunswick is no stranger to, this has happened multiple times before. Um, uh, this will create the, uh, huge traffic bottleneck at the intersection of Van Dyke and, uh, Jersey Ave, which will back up, uh, towards French Street, um, and into the surrounding roads, because, uh, the intersection of Jersey Ave and French Street is already massively-
Good warning.
Mr. Orgey? Just, just so you're aware, the, the board is not considering that application tonight, and the applicant has already, uh, signed off. The, the board is not going to hear additional comments about that application.
Well, I find it suspicious, then, that this plan was pushed by the planning board, despite the fact that the three projects, the Pavilion, the Power Station, and the Parking Deck are all inexorably linked. They cannot exist without the other, and the planning board, as esteemed as I hold you in regards, um, you keep saying this again and again, but the projects are inherently linked together, so, uh, how can you say that when the fate of the Parking Deck is the fate of the rest of the project? So these impacts are still relevant to the entirety of the project.
That's time.
These issues must be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who's next on the list, Dan?
Uh, Dan had to take, step away from his computer for just a moment. Uh, the next person I have on the list is, uh, Chevalier.
That'll be you. Hello, my name's Nicole.
Nicole?
Yes.
Okay, you have, uh, five minutes. I know that Dan's been swearing in, but this is public comment portion, not testimony, so you may-
I understand.
You, you may comment on anything and understand, of course, that the application that's still pending before the board, or applications that are yet to come before the board, uh, the, the board, um, is, is not to consider those, so, uh, I'd ask you not to comment on those, but your time starts.
Of course. Okay, wonderful, thank you much. Oh, okay, thank you much. So I'm coming in, actually, as, um, someone with expertise on child development. That's what I studied in college, that's what I got my degree in specialization. Um, it actually started when I was 15. I worked at a camp, and so I actually had this experience where I helped a four-year-old who was having a panic attack because one of our staffers said that they would call his father and his mom to tell him that he was misbehaving, um, and he had a full-blown panic attack, because he actually has PTSD from the time that his dad beat him and his twin sister near to death. Um, so then I made that my profession, and now I work with traumatized children full-time. So I'm really accustomed to seeing children, you know, ripped from their families and being put into terrible situations by a system that unfortunately really prioritizes profits over, you know, children. Um, and more often than not, let's call what it is. It's racist. It's a racist system. Um, so, this is my question, because I've spent years, like, helping nursing babies that were addicted to heroin, um, you know, teenagers that were sexually assaulted by their mother's boyfriend. Um, how much is your salary? Because I, I have never made above minimum wage, so what I'd like to know is, at what point, once my paycheck goes up, do I get to start being okay with giving these babies cancer? Um, my second question, do you think your ancestors would be able to forgive the blood you have on your hands?
Do you have any other questions?
I feel like those are pretty good. Um, uh, but this board is voluntary, they are not paid.
And just so you're aware, this is, this is for public-
Damn, okay, no offense, but hold y'allself to higher esteem. You know, they said, what was, Jesus was sold for, what, 30 pieces of gold? Y'all are just out here doing it for free? Learn! And they say the devil works hard.
Do you have any other comments, miss?
Um, I'll, I mean, my mom's real Catholic. I'll ask her to pray for y'all. Keep y'all in my thoughts and prayers. Dear Lord, get well soon. Whoo, idle hands and all that, I guess.
Do you have any other comments? Thank you.
Have a lovely evening.
You too. Uh, who's next on the list? I see, I think, Deach?
Uh, Cohen.
Oh, Elizabeth Saccani.
Yeah, I'm back. I'll, I'll run the clock on this, if, if she's-
Okay.
Sorry for the mispronunciation.
Are you here? Yes.
I am still here.
You, you may begin.
Thank you. Um, I think that it's very concerning that the applicants are given all the time in the world and are even coached by the board's attorney, and yet the public is being cut off left and right in every possible way. They're being given less and less time to question the applicant, they're being given less and less time to speak, they're being interrupted by the board, they're being cut off by the board, they're being cut off by the other people's attorney, they're being cut off by your own attorney. When is it going to be okay for people to take, to, to be able to, uh, tell the board what they want? they want instead of the board just thrusting on us what Devco wants? When will the time come that the public will be treated fairly? How come I'm, how come I'm the voter and the taxpayer and and the mayor gets to appoint you? And how come if the mayor gets to appoint you, then why is the entire board stacked with people who are gonna favor what the mayor wants? When are you gonna put some people on the board that actually favor what the people of the city want? And what they don't want is a giant cancer pavilion with a giant uh fossil fuel burning power station and parking lot that will force you to tear out homes of people that want to stay there? This is a very unreasonable and disturbing approach to things. I think there's an outlandish amount of conflict of interest here, yet no one wants to recuse themselves or even acknowledge that there could even be a problem. All you wanna do is gloss over it and shut people down. It's tiresome and disturbing. When will you stop? That is my question.
Do you have any other comments?
That was a question. Are you gonna answer?
I have no comment. Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you. I just wonder how you will sleep at night.
All right.
Do you have any other comments? Dan, can we have the next-
The next up is Dmika Deitch.
Hi.
I I believe you didn't speak before, Armin. Do we need to swear her in or?
Public comment. She can speak.
Yeah, all right. You're on.
Just talk about me. Crocker.
Uh, Dmika Deitch. So I wanna thank everyone for the great work they're doing tonight. Um, I'm sure everyone on the board, I as someone who has a great interest in local politics, I'm sure you guys once were uh very excited to be in local politicians' positions. Um, I know you care, must care greatly about the local government and the people of this neighborhood. I wanna thank you for that initial um optimistic goal towards government. I know you can't answer questions during this time because this is comment, but I have been wondering about when along the way did you start getting tired of actually helping people and start moving more and more towards lining your own pockets? Because local government is about the people and I know corporations are legally considered people, but they don't vote or pay. No, they do pay taxes, don't they? Hmm, okay. Well, I just think that it's great that you guys had such a great interest in public government that you are doing this for free out of the goodness of your hearts. And because I know there's goodness in your heart, I know it must be weighing on you that you can't do anything to stop these children from being sent to a cancer hole of trailers instead of a good school with uh with the um solar panels and one of the best ratings in the state. I know it must be weighing deeply on your consciousness, consciences, that you can't do anything to stop this because the only option you have in front of you is to pass along this paperwork that because you're told you're supposed to. And I just wanna know if you guys care about that? If you've ever thought for a second, what if I actually went back to my roots? What if I went back to caring about the people and the politics and the town that we all love so dearly? What if we thought about the interests of the people who can save this world, of the next generation of children who are being educated in our own amazing public school system? Don't we wanna give them the best chance possible? Maybe one day they'll solve cancer. Maybe we don't need this fancy cancer pavilion that's only going to actually give more cancer to children. Um, and instead, we can help the people that actually live here. And I just know because I know local politicians work so hard that I know it does affect you and you do care about it. And I know it's tough that you have to pretend like it doesn't and to hear people disagreeing with you. Um, but just consider what it would be like to live by your morals instead of by policies written by people who only wanna get richer. And that probably statistically won't even include you. That's all. Thank you so much. Have a great night and solidarity to everyone who's made this night hell.
All right, um, next up is Charlie Cradaville. You there?
Yes, I am here. Good evening, members of the board. I gotta say, this is not how it's supposed to work in more ways than one. Uh, you know, first of all, in a normal city, the Board of Education would have the interest of the children and families first, but we don't have that. We have a system where Mayor Cahill has never let go of his stranglehold over the Board of Ed. He didn't want to have elections for the Board of Ed and he still controls all of the board members, even though we switched to an elected board because that's what the voters wanted. And so I'm calling out Mayor Cahill for being a coward and not showing up to defend this scheme. He has a seat on this board and if he truly uh thought this was uh uh in the public interest, he would show up here and he would defend it and he would support it in that manner. But he's been hiding for the better part of a year now, ever since he unveiled this scheme. And I know that a lot of people must be disappointed and demoralized that so many things didn't go our way so far and uh it seems that the the proposal is moving forward, maybe not as fast as the developer wanted it to. But I just wanna point out that we have scored some victories along the way. The biggest one is is right off the top. The uh lawyer who would normally be representing Devco in the the king of conflicts, Tom Kelso, is no longer representing Devco on this matter. The planning board knows that he's usually Devco's attorney. Well, they they knew that that was too fishy to 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 try that this time, so Kelso is uh maybe uh, you know, not getting paid off of this one. Uh, also, the mayor's original crazy plan was to build a new school at a super contaminated site at one thirty-one Jersey Avenue. That also didn't fly because our movement said, no way, that is not acceptable. It's not an acceptable location. And the location that is uh being pursued is maybe not the best, but it is closer and will require less remediation than the one that Mayor Cahill callously proposed in his uh uh original proposal. And finally, uh, the NBPA will not be participating in this scam. They will not be uh doing the developers' work for them and providing parking at the taxpayer expense, um, partly because they can't afford to, but also partly because of the pressure that uh uh this movement has been building against the NBPA. And I think we've got a real uh a number of crises on our hands. Corruption, the climate crisis, and our failing democracy uh at the local level and all the way up to the federal government. We're gonna keep fighting. We're not gonna give up because this progress we've made is only the beginning and there will be legal cases. There already are some legal cases that are still alive, but unfortunately, this board has given us more ammunition to bring to the court with the way that these hearings have been conducted, the manner that uh uh we've given deference to the developer and, you know, crapped all over the public. Um, and so we're gonna have bring forth legal cases. We're gonna bring forth ethics complaints. We're going to potentially bring forth criminal complaints because fraud is a crime, racketeering is a crime, and people who are criminals do get caught once in a while. Ron Demure is one of them. He was the mayor of Middlesex Borough and he uh brought in your attorney to be the town attorney there before he got caught being a thief, uh stealing from uh people in a Ponzi scheme and stealing from campaigns where he was the treasurer. He was the the mayor of Middlesex Borough until recently. He got busted and we're gonna bust some more people ourselves uh uh if if we keep this up and guarantee you we will.
One minute, Charlie. Just letting you know.
Thank you. And we are gonna stop this natural gas power plant. We are not gonna allow this in our neighborhood. We're gonna abolish the NBPA and that whole regime. Uh, and we're gonna ultimately remove Mayor Cahill, the kingpin of the corruption. This is only the beginning. This is only one fight along the way, but all of us are starting to learn these bigger issues and see how they affect our government, which we own, and how it's perverting and uh, you know, subverting the way it's supposed to work. So I encourage you all to think about what I said tonight and think about what kind of city you wanna live in, whether you wanna live in a democratic city or whether you wanna live in a city where people don't have democratic rights and where fossil fuel projects are being built in the year twenty twenty-one. We're done with it. The people have had enough and we're gonna keep fighting this nonsense until it ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Who's next on the list, Dan?
Next up is Matthew Mione. Are you there?
Mm-hmm, I'm here.
Go on.
Thank you. Um, yeah. Pretty hard to follow that up. I think uh Charlie is all on top of all the major things here. I wanna just echo pretty much everything he said. If anyone's really curious, you know, if you go to the Planning Board meeting, applications and supporting documents on the cityofnewbrunswick.org website, you check out application exhibit or you check out the documents submitted by the public under twenty-four Hardenberg Street, Exhibit B one, you know, submitted by Charlie. He lays out all the conflict of interest, specifically with um the lawyer from Bob Smith, who is constantly interrupting this entire meeting, um, constantly interrupting people of the public trying to make comments and uh clearly being biased and uh, you know, a lot of what he said is probably gonna be taken off and a lot of this is gonna be need to be examined by a third party and realized for the blatant corruption and blatant trying to push this through without actually getting any examination by the public and shortening the time down to only five minutes to examine three witnesses and make a case. I mean, it's um pretty obvious um what's going on here and yeah, like Charlie said, it's it's already in the court courts and it's gonna continue to be. And I'm definitely um looking forward to see how that progresses because it's going to progress progress on that front. Um, that's for sure. That's for sure.
Do you have any other comments, sir? Mr. Mione?
Next up is uh Danielle Moore. You there, Danielle?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep, you're on.
Yes. Oh, yes, first I would like to start off where I know uh Ms. Ludwig says that about, okay, the school is sold already. Okay, big deal, you can still vote and vote on the on the project tonight and what, maybe the Board of Education can buy the Lincoln Annex School back? Due to where, like I said, you don't live nowhere over over this way to really see what goes on. Just like how you said, no money will come out of the taxpayers' regards to this, what the city of New Brunswick is paying so much money to try to redo the park over there by Walgreens right next to where fifty Jersey Avenue is, due to where that's where they plan to build a new school. Please, what, the police are picking up drug users, what, using K-2 space three times a day? How many overdoses over there? That center, center's been, that park has been gated up for two months now where the city, the city council thinks that we're gonna slow the gathering down. It's still not slowing down and I'm still saying, I'm pretty sure, Ms. Ludwig, due to you're on Facebook just as much with your stories, I'm pretty sure you happen to see my stories of how many pictures and videos I'm showing to put up there. That is not an area for a school to go. And just like how the county road, how how many crashes keep taking that guard rail down on French Route twenty-seven in Sanford, what, on Alexander and French, it says, do not cross, due to where you do not have any crosswalk, any sign? The city's gonna have to do all of that. So keep saying, no, the city's not gonna pay anything from the tax dollars. It's a lie. And like I said, Ms. Ludwig and the rest of you, if you do vote yet, God forbid, one thing happens to these, to these kids, you will feel the pain for the rest of your life because what you're doing is putting these kids at danger, what, from getting cancer or dealing with dealing with the traffic. Like I said, Mr. Dominguez and Ms. Ludwig, due to where you know, I'm a pro with the traffic authority and the city council when saying something is unsafe. And believe me, how many times have I warned you? And wow, with none of you listening, how many how many people have gotten killed or injured? And like I said, believe me, I hope you do. You 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 can vote, uh, no, other board members, just because Ms. Ludwig is president, a head of Board of Ed meeting, you can still vote against her, say no, due to where this is gonna cost too, cost too much and cost too many problems with regards with safety issue, how how you're putting these kids at risk. Come on, be be real, you keep saying this is all a bore, this is all a bore? No, this is on you just as much as the board because if you, because they can't do this project without you saying yes. So you can say no, you are a big part of this and I hope you do say no without doing this because like I said, you are putting these kids in danger. Cause Jersey Avenue is so black, I don't, I'm not scared to go down any other road except Jersey Avenue due to where the jet black and the street lights are always off. Like I said, so many people have so much to say due to where you do not live over here. You do not know what goes on. And like I said, with this building, due to what, moment nineteen, how many ambulants pass through Hamilton Street, Somerset Street, French Street? And you saying this will not affect the traffic and it's gonna take three years to build this? That's a lie. That is a total lie. And like I said, other board members, I hope you really think, due to where, stop letting Ms. Ludwig lead you into, oh, you have to do this, you have to do that. And I mean, it's really sad and like I said, I'm curious, do you have cancer, Ms. Ludwig? Or do someone in your family have cancer? Cause wow, I I I feel sad about, I'm not going against anyone who has cancer. My grandmother died from lung cancer. It's a hurt, but believe me, I still know what's right and wrong to do something. And were you putting these kids in danger? Like I said, did any of you take the time to go sit, sit into school at forty Van Dyke? Has any of you went over to fifty Jersey Avenue to see what it's like? Sexual assault, drugs, it's not safe at all over there. Next to the railroad tracks, who's gonna pay for a border so the kids don't go across the track? My boy Johnson never said anything about paying, paying for that. How many people have gotten killed, hit by trains within the past three months? At least two to three deaths.
That's time, Ms. Moore.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. Who's next on the list?
Sorry, I was making this. Next up is Arlie Rubens. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Floor is yours.
I'd just like to say that the sense of superiority and level of condescension in this meeting is pretty outsized for people on the planning board of New Brunswick, New Jersey. I don't know what has you convinced that the livelihoods of yourselves and your children are so much more important than those of the working families of the city, but a spot on the planning board of New Brunswick, New Jersey doesn't really cut it. You're not even lining your own pockets, at least not directly. I just wonder how it feels to be up at eleven o'clock on a Monday night to make money for already filthy rich people who probably wouldn't give you a second look. It's pathetic and if you don't feel any shame, I at least hope you're a little fucking embarrassed by where you ended up. I'll echo a sentiment from another member of the public. It's incredible that you people do this for free. With the rest of my time, I'd like to list out the dollar amounts planning board members paid for their board appointments in the form of donations last election cycle. First, we have two thousand dollars for Mr. Bignell and his consulting firm, five hundred dollars for Ms. Akora Ludwig, five hundred dollars for Mr. Dominguez, one thousand dollars for Mr. Stella Tella, and one thousand two hundred fifty from Mr. Carly's Delaware Railroad and Engineering. Good night and thank you to our incredible neighbors who have dedicated themselves to this night and to the rest of the board. I hope you lose sleep.
Hope you get a clue.
Do we have anyone else on the list, Dan?
Sorry, who was that?
Next up is Miguel.
To a member of the public.
Come on, fess up. Who said it? Where are your big balls, man?
Next up is Miguel.
That was Miguel?
No, no, no. I'm saying next up is Miguel Romero.
Oh, okay. Mr. Romero, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, you're you're on.
Okay, so basically I just wanted to continue um a bit of the comment that I was saying before I got cut off um previous- um, previously, that um, Robert Johnson is not a public entity. They're a private company and Midas Lux County is about to spend $25 million of taxpayer money not for the benefit of the public. Because again, this comp, this company is not a, a public company. They're not, there's no public health insurance for anybody to go, um, for anybody to be able to use it freely. The board members of, the board members of Robert Johnson make hundreds of thousands of dollars. And meanwhile, the median household income in New Brunswick is around $42,000. There are a lot of people in New Brunswick and in New Jersey that cannot afford to pay for insurance and they have to make life and death decisions based on, you know, not being able to afford uh, insurance to be able to, you know, get a surgery or something like that. And basically, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because again, even though I, uh, most of the people agree that a cancer center would be a good idea, it's not a good idea to build it in the place that they're trying to build it. And it's not a good idea using the excuse of Robert Johnson um, providing some kind of public service because they're not. They're a private entity. If you look at the emails that um, um, Charlie posted in that PDF, um, you can see that um, um, the, one of the board members of Robert Johnson, Barry Avloski and Chris Palladino and all these different, all these different, all these different people that are making thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, they had been planning in advance to make this happen without letting the public know. Not only that, they're looking at this uh, per bets. See, looks like uh, looks like we are going to figure out how to make this cool site work and we'll have the bets. Like, they're not really looking at this through like, a public service as they appear to be. They're really looking at it from the perspective of, of making more money for their own corporation. So I just wanted to um, I just wanted to um, reiterate that. And um, I think it's really irresponsible that the developer of this plan has not proposed this plan in a coherent manner. They're getting some parts of it approved and some parts of it, uh, they're pushing for like, for example, the Lincoln Annex being sold. And they have not disclosed all the information on the parking, um, the, the parking deck that they're trying to build. They have not disclosed all the information on the power station that they're trying to build. And it just makes you think if these parts, if these parts of the plan do not get approved, then the whole uh, plan, um, you know, gets messed up and, you know, it gets uh, destroyed. So it's just, it just really puts, you know, into question like, the ability for these people to be able to plan something as large as, you know, as they're doing now. And yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, next. Yes, next up is Linda Stork. Are you still there, Linda?
Yes, I am.
You're on.
Um, yeah, okay, so uh, and I would, you, some, somebody had said before when Miguel mentioned the parking application not being ready at the same time, that the, um, I, I specifically remember that. They were not presenting. And when, when we were in the meeting where you were considering the application for the cancer center, the, the parking um, plan, the parking deck plan, power station plan, could not, was not available. It had been put up briefly but pulled down from the site. So that is not true, that they were both available at the same time to the public anyway. Um, and I would just like to reiterate um, something that Ms. Coney also said since her first comments about, about the neighborhoods in New Brunswick. Since this is for more general comments. Um, because every time it seems that we bring something up, it's that, oh, the scope, that's beyond the purview of this board. The scope of the board is so, it's been, you know, everything's been chopped up in little pieces. And everywhere we go, because it's not like this is the only place that we protested this whole plan. And it's not like we just started yesterday. They were keeping it secret for a long time and acting like we were crazy and paranoid to, to see this coming. And um, it's about the neighborhood. It's, but we, we need so many things to make New Brunswick better, to make, to improve the quality of life. And you know what we didn't need? We didn't need to lose a really good neighborhood school with energy efficient solar panels on the roof and a high rating and, and well liked by the families and successful academically in, to gain a cancer center. Nobody that lives in New Brunswick would have told you that we needed a cancer center because why? Because we already have two. I can walk to two cancer centers within a few minutes of my house. Two, that which are both by all accounts, very good. Everybody that I know that got treatment at either one of them was more than satisfied. So this isn't really about, you know, a service to the community or any kind of benefit to the community. This is about, you know, a huge, bringing in the research dollars and having this whole multimillion dollar thing going on. This isn't the place for it. Yes, cancer research also needs to be done, but you can't just plop something like that down in the middle of a neighborhood. All, all these streets are two lane streets going in and out in every direction. Common sense would tell you, you can't build a, a almost thousand car parking deck there and not create worse problems because there already are problems. It's already a quality of life issue that you just can't go certain places at certain times. You know, another percentage of the traffic, they said, will be, will, will head over the bridge into Highland Park. Well, good luck with that. You guys know the traffic backs up to go over that bridge, down Route 18 and back up the other way through New Brunswick. That's just a fact already. So it doesn't matter that they're saying, oh, you know, only, only 15% of, of the 500 cars are going to head that way. No, no, not acceptable. This is just, this is just a terrible plan. And the terrible plan was made on the back of the school kids, which is just unconscionable to me. You know, having been a teacher in this city for, for, for so many years and living in the neighborhood and I just, it's just so bad on so many levels.
One.
It's not what the.
One minute warning, Linda, just letting you know.
Community needed. So what I would like to, you know, going forward, I would like to see the Planning Board actually make a plan for the city with community input so that we can get what we need to make our city a better place to live. That's all. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Stork.
Next up is Victor Vaughn. You there?
Victor Vaughn?
Victor.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're on.
All right, so one of the friends of Cahill is developer Ron Paulus, who owns a warehouse that will serve as a temporary school for displaced Lincoln Annex students. 40 Van Dyke Ave has been also used as a holding place for groups of displaced students in the past. There's no evidence that he has any experience with properties for educational use. But Robert Paulus profits from every instance of student displacement in the City of New Brunswick. The warehouse at 40 Van Dyke Ave has basically become a replacement school on standby, which the city can use whenever it likes. It is so readily available and so frequently used, sets as an awful precedent by making student displacement not only effortless but profitable. Personally, through his development company, Wick Companies, and through some of his 46 registered LLCs and shell companies, Robert Paulus has donated thousands of dollars to Mayor Cahill's election funds. And the money goes both ways. Friends of Jim Cahill, Cahill's reelection PAC, paid one of Paulus's LLCs for hosting an urban mayor's meeting at a restaurant that did not exist at the time. And New Brunswick Today was unable to trace any basic information about the event. The Cancer Pavilion Development Project feeds directly into these ethical dealings by creating another profitable displacement for a quote, "friend of Jim Cahill." Since, since all of you are so completely and utterly tied to Jim Cahill, I'm just wondering like, you know, are, are, are they going to pay for like, your lawyer fees and shit? When like, you know, um, all these kids that are moved into this warehouse, you know, inevitably end up with some kind of condition? And uh, you know, I'm hoping that like, you know, parents just, you know, go the route, the legal route of like, getting lawyers and stuff because like, I don't have kids, but I can't imagine the kind of pain that would come from like, you know, my child uh, being diagnosed with something that was totally avoidable. Go to a school with like, solar panels and has been characterized as one of the best schools in the state, you know? But because a bunch of people like, felt the need to sell their kids like, up the river for, for free apparently, you know? I don't know, man. Like, that's not what I would do. I mean, I, I, I would try and find like, another job, anything else but this. You know, especially if it like, you know, can't pay for even like, basic shit like hair plugs or like, you know, getting plastic surgery so you don't look like Gus fucking Pring. Or like, you know, any of the basic shit. Uh, I don't know. Best of luck, you know? Uh, I, I hope that you have no shortage of, you know, sacrifices to like, the dark god of Balak or, you know, whatever the hell it is that like, you know, y'all do this for. Uh, that's it. Peace out.
Mr. Dominguez, is there anyone else on the list?
There is no one else on the list.
Did you say no?
Yeah, there's no one else on the list.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Bob Cardick, I'll move.
Ryan Berger, I'll second.
Oh, right.
Roll call, Dan?
No, it's not roll call. It's just favor, right?
Okay.
I'll oppose?
That's fine.
All right.
See you all tomorrow night.
Only answer. We don't need Kim Dinko for 30 years lifetime. We need to get rid of him.